Right, can we, can we come to order please? Hello. I know it's, it's far too hot in here, there aren't enough fans. I can recommend going to a small shop which, in Meadowhill, which sounds very exciting. This is the one that's not only a fan, but also releases water. And the folding one. It involves a feline that is apparently able to go out in the air, I won't name it, other shops are available. There you go. So, first thing I wanted to say was, it isn't, because it is so hot, I do not expect people to wear jackets or ties. Thank you, no, that's great, thank you. But as Tom Jones would say, you can leave your hat on. So with that, welcome everybody to what's going to be quite a difficult meeting, I think, just in terms of the, the weather, rather than anything else. And I'm now, I'm now going to ask the Director of Legal and Governance to announce the housekeeping arrangements.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. To help keep everyone safe, please try to avoid congregating around exits and entrances. Follow the signage which is provided, such as one-way systems to help keep you safe. Remain seated as much as possible during the meeting. Council members, officers and members of the public are recommended to wear a face covering when moving around the building, and hand sanitizer is available for use. If you have any concerns or are unsure, please ask a member of staff. Can I request members of the public to familiarise themselves with the five safety and evacuation notices displayed in the public gallery? In the event of the evacuation signal sounding, please take instruction from the security attendants who will be in attendance throughout the meeting. Can I request everyone to switch mobile devices to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? The meeting today will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. It's also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting. Photography, video and sign recording of the meeting is permitted, but the Lord Mayor does have discretion to withdraw or suspend this permission if the recording is disrupting the conduct of the meeting, is being undertaken in a manner which could capture personal information, or if a member of the public participating objects to being recorded. Any member of the public due to speak at the meeting who does not wish to be recorded should say so at the start of their speech, and the Lord Mayor will suspend the permission to record their contribution. For safety reasons, please may I request that recording equipment is not held over the balcony. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Gillian. I have got a couple of announcements that I want to make at this point, and then there will be a few later. First of all, we'll start with a very happy announcement, that councillor Sophie Wilson and her partner Josh have now got a beautiful baby girl called Isla. And if you have a look on Sophie's Facebook page, you'll see that when I say she's beautiful, she absolutely is. So I think we'd all like to send our best wishes from this council for speedy getting over the difficult stuff last week, and getting on to the bit about really enjoying having a baby, which I think usually takes about six weeks if I remember rightly. But we'll all send our best wishes to Sophie, and look forward to her coming back with us in September, and bringing Isla with her if that's what she chooses to do. I had a note here from councillor Denise Fox, that the two parish nurses who came last meeting to talk to us about their work in the city centre, we had a collection, and as a result of this, we have raised £2,010 from you as councillors. And this is going towards continuing their work helping people on the streets. And I just wanted us all to note that although we always think of the winter as being a bad time to be on the streets, certainly being on the streets in this incredibly hot weather cannot be very pleasant either, so I'm glad we've been able to help them. I want to also say, going on from this hot weather, if people want to go out to get water from the water cooler which is just outside, the back doors there, just get up and do that, you know, you don't have to ask permission from anybody to do that. As you've probably been told, I've got a bad back, which is why I'm sitting on this podium and on this strange chair, and I feel a bit like I'm Davros, the leader of the Daleks. So I'll just say now, anybody who crosses me will be exterminated at this meeting. So also, if by the, any part of the meeting my back does give way, I have asked councillor Anne Murphy to be my lovely, able, glamorous assistant and step in to chair instead. So we're hoping that won't happen. And finally, I just wanted to say that Clive Stevenson, our licensing officer, one of our licensing officers, died very suddenly yesterday, and I know this will be a huge shock to the many of us who've served on licensing, who found his support and help something we couldn't do without. And I'm actually just going to ask David Barker, who is co-chair of licensing, if he'd like to just say a few words, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, I would like to say a very few words. I wasn't prepared to say anything. I was a real shocked when I found out this morning what had happened. But I think most people in this room will have worked with Clive, many on the licensing committee, many with queries about licensing, and anybody that had any contact with Clive couldn't do anything but hold him in the greatest respect. He was a wonderful officer, he knew his stuff, and if he could help you, he would. And amazingly, officers who are well respected by councillors aren't always as well respected by the people out there. But Clive is held in the utmost respect by the taxi trade in Sheffield. People over the years that I've been on licensing have never had anything bad to say about Clive. They thought he was fair, that he was an expert in the field, and that he really knew his stuff. He will be a real sad loss to this council and to Sheffield, but even more a sad loss to his family and friends. And I just hope you'd all join me in sending our sympathy to them today. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
And I'm sure that your co-councillor, co-chair, sorry, Jane Dunn, and also previous Chair Karen McGowan will also join you echoing what you've said. So yes, we will send condolences to his family. Thank you. Right, we're now going to move to item two, which is apologies for absence. And we have apologies from Mike Chaplin, Alexi Diamond, Tony Downing, Brian Homshaw, Ruth Milson, Minesh Parek, Colin Ross, Sophie Wilson, who is on a special leave at the moment because of her baby, Cliff Woodcraft, Peter Garbutt, Henry Nottage, Paul Wood and Nobila Milano. Are there any others that we have missed? Apologies, Lord Mayor, I didn't catch councillor Mike Chaplin's name.
Yes, okay, thank you, I mistake.
Who was the first one? Right, item three, do we have any declarations of interest? This item of business is to enable members of the council to declare any interest in any item on the agenda. When declaring an interest, the member should refer to the item of business, state whether it is a pecuniary or a personal interest, and outline the reason for the declaration. So does anybody wish to declare an interest? I'll take that as, oh, sorry, councillor Sator.
Thank you, Chair, I'd like to declare an interest in, I, um, in item six, a notice of motion regarding buses. My husband's a director of First Bus, so that's a personal interest.
Sorry, thank you councillor Sator, I've just taken support from the officer here, and you can take part in the debate because it is deemed to be a personal interest. Thank you. We will now move on, oh, it's got, item four, public questions and petitions and other communications. So I'm just going to do another communication from me, which is, thank you to all of our staff from the events team and partners who've worked so hard to make Sheffield the fabulous venue it's been for the Women's UEFA Cup. Anybody who's been to the matches or anybody who has been to the fan zone will know that it's just been glorious, obviously having booked this particular batch of weather. Sorry, I got it a bit too hot. It's, it's just really displayed Sheffield as, as we would want it to look, and it's certainly been a very joyous occasion. And I will expect every single member of this council to be crossing limbs tonight that the Lionesses get through to the semi-final because then they will be playing next week at Bramall Lane. Even me, Mrs Welsh supporter, I'll be crossing limbs for them as well. So good luck the Lionesses from us in Sheffield. Right, public questions can be asked and petitions can be presented at council meetings. We encourage questions or petitions to be submitted two clear days in advance of the meeting to help public attendance at the meeting to be managed in a safe way and to assist members to provide responses or answers. Petitions or questions received after the submission deadline shall be presented or asked at the meeting at my discretion as Chair of the meeting. There are two, I think, additional questions which I have agreed can be submitted today. So for this meeting, we have two petitions which will be presented, and questions, is that from fourteen members then? Thirteen members of the public. Two further petitions will be received in the absence of a presenter. Yesterday, another question was received, and I've used my discretion to permit that one, plus the one that's come today. A period of sixty minutes is allowed in total for ordinary petitions and public questions. So can I call upon the Director of Legal and Governance to announce petitions? And may I request that petitioners be brief and keep within their time limit of three minutes? May I also request that members keep within their maximum time limit of five minutes when responding to the petitions? And can I ask that questioners, when we get to that bit, be as brief as possible when asking questions, and that members keep their responses short and succinct? So thank you everybody in advance for your cooperation. Director of Legal and Governance, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can I just check, I have one petition with speakers, but it's two speakers. So I have a petition requesting action on pension divestment, and that Sarah Johnson and Martin Meyer wish to address the council. Is, is there anybody else who thinks that they're speaking on a petition today? No, right, that's great, thank you. So I've received a joint electronic and paper petition containing 197 signatures requesting action on pension divestment. Sarah Johnson and Martin Meyer wish to address the council, and it's recommended that this petition's referred to the Strategy and Resources Policy Committee. Would you like to come to the microphone and address the council? Oh, you're okay, can do it there, thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair, my name's Martin Mayer, I'm Secretary of Sheffield Trade Union Council, and I'm presenting this petition, thank you for hearing it. We're calling today on the council to join the Palestinian call for international support for boycott divestment and sanctions in supporting justice for Palestine. This is especially important now that several authoritative organisations have declared that Israel operates as an apartheid state. Amnesty International's recent report forensically details the following: fragmentation and segregation of occupied Palestinian land, denial of Palestinians' rights to equality, equal nationality and status, restriction of Palestinians' freedom of movement as a means of control over land and people, separation of families through discriminatory laws, forced dispossession of Palestinian land and property to promote settler colonialism, administrative detention and torture, unlawful killings and serious injuries. Michael Link, former UN Special Rapporteur for occupied Palestine, argues that Israel's system of oppression, discrimination, control and abusive treatment meets the international definition of apartheid. For example, 61% of the West Bank has been expropriated and entirely under Israeli civil and military control, including 285 Israeli illegal colonial settlements to which Palestinians are denied access. We call on the council to accept the Amnesty Report that Israel is an apartheid state and reaffirm its 1981 commitment to be an apartheid-free zone. We therefore also call on the council to campaign for South Yorkshire Pensions Authority to commit to divestment in companies shown to be complicit in human rights abuses, including those involved in the ongoing oppression of the Palestinian people.
Sarah?
Whilst on the face of it, this petition may seem radical, we are simply calling on the council to recommit to a position it took forty years ago. Sheffield has a long and proud history of fighting injustice. Why should Sheffield council get involved in Israel-Palestine? In 1981, as council leader, David Blunkett was asked this question when he declared Sheffield an apartheid-free zone. We were the first local authority to pledge to end all links with apartheid. Public pensions investments played a big role. By 1985, more than 120 local councils had taken some form of anti-apartheid initiative. Professor Michael Link, UN rapporteur, urged local government pension schemes to divest from any holdings linked to Israeli settlements. Today, the government aims to control how public service pensions are invested, rather than allowing pensions authorities to decide. Whilst the pensions authority has a responsibility to maximise its returns, it must be free to decide how and where to invest or divest, especially when considering human rights and our planet. Quoting David Blunkett, there is a direct link between fighting racism and inequality abroad and what is happening here in Sheffield. Palestine has called for a global citizens' response of solidarity with their struggle for freedom, justice and equality. We hope Sheffield council will do just that by recommitting to its proud and historic pioneering stance and support this petition. Thank you.
Thank you to our two speakers. Because we also have five questions on this issue, I'm going to ask now for those five people who have a question on this issue to ask their question, and then we will ask the leader of the council, councillor Terry Fox, to address both the petition and all the questions in one go. So I believe it's June Cattell, capital? Apologies if I've mispronounced your name.
That's fine. I'm a bit small for the microphone, so hopefully you can hear me.
I know the feeling.
Do I need to stand closer? Right. Just listening to the last speaker makes me feel very proud of the principled stand that this city took against South African apartheid in 1981, at a time when the British government was opposed to sanctions and when Thatcher spoke of the ANC as a terrorist organisation. My question is, why is this not happening now? Why are we not campaigning against Israel in the same way? Could we here in Sheffield, and with the council as well, take a lead in the struggle to end occupation and apartheid for the Palestinian people, just as this council and Sheffield took a lead in 1981? With the ongoing regular killings of Palestinians by the Israeli army, continued arrest and imprisonment of Palestinians, including children, continued seizure of land and water resources, continued expansion of settlements, continued attacks by Palestinian, on Palestinians by settlers, and daily demolitions, including of the village of Al-Aqib, which is within the Israeli borders and yesterday was demolished for the 204th time. How can Sheffield council help once more to make Sheffield an apartheid-free zone and encourage the pensions authority, city institutions, community organisations, faith organisations, companies, students, universities, trade unions, all to work together to achieve this? I hope it can build on the record of 1981.
Thank you, June. I believe it's Sue Owen next.
My question's about local democracy. What steps are you as a council taking to oppose the government's profoundly undemocratic attempts to restrict the freedom of local councils to make their own ethical decisions with regard to pension investment and other investment procurement decisions? This is particularly important in relation to Palestine and investments in companies that support Israel's apartheid system and Israel's breaking of international law, which the government is aiming to protect with its anti-BDS legislation, and will also affect other ethical decisions such as in relation to climate change. What are you doing to protect the democratic right as a local authority to make your own ethical decisions for Sheffield people who are members of the Local Authority Pension Fund? This is money that belongs to local people, not to the government.
Thank you, Sue. And next, Hilary Smith?
Yeah, that, yeah, that's right. As a resident of Sheffield and having contributed to a South Yorkshire pension for over twenty years, I feel outraged that the government's planning to curtail the influence that pension members can have on where their money is invested. Sheffield council rightly has high expectations of its staff in applying principles of justice and fairness, and I feel this should extend to its expectations of the pension fund. So I want to know how the council is going to support me in opposing this iniquitous legislation. As a fund member of Jewish heritage, I demand that the council firmly opposes any attempts to outlaw legitimate attempts to divest from companies complicit in Israel's war crimes. My last point is just about those war crimes. They occur on a daily basis. Currently, the communities of Masafayata is undergoing and suffering and resisting against the biggest ethnic cleansing since 1967. So please support what we're asking and support our petition.
Our next speaker is Ayann Abdul-Kadir.
Hello, thank you very much. Today I have the time to ask them about the apartheid of Israel. I asked them in the coalition, in the council of Sheffield and government, and British government, why are you making intersection about Palestinian Israelis people? I have asked them, that's the council thinking in hyperetical that the international community has not boycotted the Israeli government through the seventy-three years-long apartheid occupation and accession against the Palestinian civilian, while they boycott the Rashia government during the Putin invasion of Ukraine after seven days. I am Somali Women Association and who you might is in Sheffield and UK. We need in this day making international community, especially in the British government, making intersection like Rashia making seven days intersection. That's why making in the free Palestinian and boycott of Israelis occupation in the Palestinian illegal settlement. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ayann. And finally, Fliss Calo?
Yeah, Calo, yeah. Okay, as well as getting verbal responses to our questions today, we'd also appreciate, you know, written responses to the questions we've asked and to the petition, and also to be able to be invited to the relevant committee that's going to be discussing it. But my question is actually, I'd like to know how Sheffield City Council and its representatives on the Pension Authority will apply due diligence in line with its own responsible investment policy to ensure that companies comply with the principles of the well-recognised international human rights standards and the UN guiding principles on business and human rights. Thank you.
So thank you to the petitioners and also to the questioners, and I'll now invite councillor Terry Fox, Chair of the Strategy and Resources Policy Committee, to respond.
Thanks, Lord Mayor, and thanks to the petitioners and to the questioners on, on, on this subject. I know, I know that the subject has many implications. I'm acutely aware that watching this webcast at this moment in time will be Friends of Palestine. I know some of the Jewish community are watching with the discussions. We have had members from our group visit Palestine. We've spoke and took part in PALFest with celebrating the cultural differences and the issues. We've also spoken to our Jewish community as well. So I am acutely aware, Lord Mayor, that first of all I have to declare an interest as a member of the pension scheme, like I think some members of council will be, and so Mr Pittles decided we weren't worthy of being in any pension scheme as local councillors. So on, on that issue, and, and because of all of- So on that issue and because of all of the implications that go with this, I will get a written answer to the questioners. I will take legal advice regarding how we proceed at the Strategy and Resources. I am aware that there are legal duties within our process of what we can and can't do with the South Yorkshire Pension Authority. I'm aware of the ethical procurement as well. So rather than myself getting into a clumsy explanation orally to yourselves, I'll get a written reply where then you can hold us to account, etc. But I'll get legal advice on that request about visiting the S and R. Not that, I bet you shouldn't be stopped, but I don't know how that would proceed, Lord Mayor. So I'll take legal advice, but I'll put that into the written responses as well. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Fox. So we move back to petitions and our next petition is requesting cameras on and around Freshville Pond. Director of Legal, yeah.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. We've received an electronic petition containing 54 signatures requesting the cameras on and around Freshville Pond. There isn't a speaker to this petition, so it's recommended that the petition's referred to the Communities, Parks and Leisure Policy Committee. The next petition, I've received an electronic petition containing 10 signatures requesting the creation of parking permit zones for the roads off Abidale Road. There's no speaker to the petition. It's recommended that the petition's referred to the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Policy Committee. And finally, I've received an electronic petition containing 10 signatures requesting the demolition of outhouses at Busk Meadows. There's no speaker to the petition and it's recommended that the petition is referred to the Housing Policy Committee. That's the end of the petitions. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much, Gillian. Right, can I just remind questioners my earlier statement, requesting that they be as brief as possible when asking their questions and that members keep their responses short and succinct? This is to ensure that as much time as possible is available for the other items of business on the agenda for today's meeting. Thank you. So my first question I have is from Kate Stott. Could you come to the microphone, please, Kate?
Thank you, Chair. My question. Sheffield City Council declared a climate emergency in 2019. A commissioned analysis by the Tindall Centre states that the city needs to reach zero or near zero carbon no later than 2038 for Sheffield to make its fair contribution to the Paris Climate Change Agreement. However, one of the largest investors in South Yorkshire, the South Yorkshire Pension Authority, still invests directly in fossil fuel companies to the tune of £230 million. With five Sheffield councillors on the pension committee broadly supportive of the need to reduce the carbon exposure of the fund and similar support from other committee members, the fund still refuses to disinvest from fossil fuels, money that could be reinvested in the local community, say, in one of the many exciting and existing opportunities, such as the ultimate battery company based at the AMRC. Furthermore, the Pension Fund provides pensions for council employees across the region and the continued investment in fossil fuels puts those pensions at risk. The reason, or perhaps stalling tactic given by the Pension Fund, is that the border-to-coast pension pool doesn't offer a carbon-free investment vehicle for equities and that SYPA don't want to invest outside the pool. My ask is that will Sheffield City Council deliver on its climate emergency declaration by applying pressure on SYPA to disinvest their holdings in fossil fuel companies, either via a fossil fuel, a fossil-free equity fund within the BCPP or, if this is not forthcoming, outside the pool? Thank you.
No, thank you for coming, Kate. And can I invite councillor Julie Grocut, co-chair of the Transport, Regen and Climate Policy Committee, to respond?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you, Kate, for the question this afternoon. Pension Authority has agreed a net zero goal, which aligns to the city councils. This is amongst the most ambitious such goals, not just within the local government pension scheme, but within the wider pensions industry, and the authority's officers are working to try to deliver this. However, the role of the Pensions Authority is not to be an instrument of policy, but to pay pensions. And while risks such as climate change rightly form part of the decision-making process, it is this overriding duty that must be the Pension Authority's priority. This year, being the year in which the actuarial valuation of the Pension Fund is being undertaken, also provides the opportunity for the periodic review of the investment strategy. This review will incorporate consideration of changes to the allocation of assets to the individual product that will support both the achievement of the required returns and the achievement of the net zero goal. However, it is worth emphasising that emissions related to the fund's equality portfolios, which are the focus of the question, have reduced by 49% compared to the 2019 standing point. The strategic review will need to consider the type of products that the fund invests in. But simply changing the product you invest in does not remove one tonne of emissions from the atmosphere and also needs to be considered within the context of the partnership within the 10 other funds which the authority operates within. The strategy must, however, generate at least 70% probability of achieving the required investment return in order to ensure the fund's liabilities can be met without seeking significant additional employer contributions which would directly impact on the council's budget. The authority has a longstanding policy of investing in climate solutions and already has more money invested in renewable energy than in fossil fuel companies. Beyond this is a three-year commitment of the £240 million has been made to a specific climate opportunities product. Together with younger commitments to infrastructure, investment and other private market products will continue to increase the exposure to climate solutions. However, the authority is not equipped to make individual direct investments into local business and private equity investments. This sort would need to be made through fund managers who have the necessary expertise and whose involvement avoids potential conflicts of interest. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Grocut. The next person I have here is Helen Eden, who I think you have two questions which are to be answered by councillor Terry Fox.
Hello, thank you. Thank you for letting me be here today. I'm here from the Link Community Hub, which is a little community hub in the middle of the Strabbrook estate. We've been there for about nine years now, supporting our community. And it's a community that a lot of people haven't got much, but because of the cost of living crisis, they've got even less now. We've seen over the past few years a steady rise in poverty and deprivation. And since the beginning of the cost of living crisis, we've seen a higher rise, which has at times been quite overwhelming. So I welcome the chance to come here today to ask my questions. And today, when I finish, I'll go home, I'll have my tea and I'll watch a bit of Telly, have a shower, go to bed, watch a bit of Telly. And for me, that's just another day. And I guess for a lot of people here as well, that'll just be another day. But for a lot of the people who we're supporting now, another day is another day full of misery and struggle. And the day after that is another day of misery and struggle, with no ending sign, with no light at the end of the tunnel and no hope. A few weeks ago, when the weather was a lot colder than it is now, a gentleman came to Link Hub. He's a gentleman who struggled all his life, not got much money, but got by. This gentleman, because of the cost of living crisis, got a prepayment meter, had gone five days without electricity. Used his electricity up because prices got up overnight and the people with prepayment meters felt that rise straight away. Cost of food's gone up. He can only shop on my estate. Four tomatoes, £1.60. Four pints of milk, £1.60. So he's had no electricity for five days. And the first thing he said to me was, Helen, don't stand too close because I sting. And he did smell because he'd not been able to bathe or wash his clothes. So the food I was giving him, soup and beans, this chap's going to have to go home and eat cold beans, cold soup in a cold flat. And he said, do you know what? If I knew this was going on for four weeks or whatever, I'd be able to get through it. He says, but people are telling me that things are going to get worse. Things in the winter are going to get worse. I don't think I'll survive the winter and nobody's bothered. And I said, we are bothered and same as we did in Covid when there's a crisis, we will protect the people who need protecting. We'll all get together and we'll do something. That same week, on the Sunday, I got a phone call from a lady who I'd never met before. She'd fled domestic violence during the lockdown with two small children. She was a lady who'd been furloughed, got a bit of savings, rented herself a private house, used her savings up doing that, no support network. She'd lost her job, applied for Universal Credit, used the rest of her savings up while she's waiting for a UV to come through. She's skipping meals so she can feed her children, have enough food to feed these two young guns. This particular day, she phoned me. And just by chance, she'd seen a post on our Facebook page on the Saturday night saying, do you need help? We can refer you to a food bank. She'd phoned on the Sunday, not expecting anyone to answer. This lady hadn't got any nappies for her youngest child. She got no money. She couldn't go and buy any. She didn't know where to go. So I took her nappies round and she said, do you know what? I feel really ill today and it's not because I've just been missing food. It's because today I was going to go out and I was going to steal nappies. I didn't know what else to do. And I've never stolen in my life. It's in a nip pot. I never stole. So I've been up all night thinking, how am I going to do it? I'm going to go to Asda. I've got no money to pretend to buy anything. I'm going to have to put these nappies under my palm. She says, I feel ill because of that. And there's a thing for that now. It's called deprivation theft because it's happening more and more. People are forced to go and steal because they've got no money. Security guards in supermarkets are being trained to look out for deprivation theft. And this lady said, you know what? If I hadn't got my children, I wouldn't want to be here anymore. I wouldn't want to live this life. And that's what we're hearing more and more people saying, I don't want to be here. In seven days, I issued 25 food parcels, emergency food parcels. These are on top of the referrals I made to local food banks. Four of those food parcels went to people who had gone longer than one day without eating any food. One of those people had gone four days without eating food and she'd come to me through council officers, council housing officers from a totally different area, would phone me up on a Friday afternoon and said, one of our residents has gone four days. She's got no money, four days without food. We can't get a food parcel anywhere. So we did her a food parcel. And the housing officer said to herself, this is something we're seeing more and more. These extreme poverty levels are rising. So I just knew we got to do something about it. We've got a financial time bomb ticking away. Come these winter months when we see a further price hike, everything's going up again. People will not be here. At the Link, we're very small. We need to provide a place where people can go and get a hot meal, get warm, get a cup of tea, get a friendly face, get help, internet connection, get help with making the phone calls because they've got no credit on the phone. So I asked my local councillor, Michael Drobal, and he said, yeah, I absolutely agree. We need to do that. We need to get a community building. And we've got community buildings in our area that are underused, are stood empty, that the community want to use. We've been asking to use some of them for years. A couple of years ago, we were asked, what does the community want to use this community building for? And 17 organisations and groups said, we want to use it. And they give reasons why they want to use it, to help their community and the wider community. Those people included council officers, police, food banks. We sent an email in to Paul Woods. This was in 2020. Never had a reply. This building is still underused. So we know we need a building. Mike very nicely offered to get me two community services officers to help Mike. We spoke to Terry Fox, Terry advised us to contact the head of regeneration and property, which the community officers did, and received no response. So they emailed on the 3rd of May saying, look, this crisis is on us. It's going to get worse. We need to find a building for this community. No response. A few weeks later, I emailed. I've emailed several times. Sometimes I've had a response, other times not. The last time that Tammy Whitaker emailed me was the 30th of June and said, do you know what? I know you're going to find this disappointing, but there's a review on community buildings, so we can't do anything. I emailed back saying, can we not use it? Why can't we use these community buildings while the review's taking place? Bearing in mind, this is going to be used to keep people alive. Not had a reply to that as yet. So tonight, when I go home and I have my tea and I have a shower, I'm going to feel how lucky I am to be able to do that. I've never thought that before. I never thought I were privileged just to go to my fridge and get something to eat. And you're all lucky too. And those of us that are lucky need to help those that aren't lucky because that's the right thing to do. So my questions today, or the first question is, at present, what is being done and who is doing it to help and support those being impacted by the cost of living crisis in the Strabbrook area? What are the future plans to support the people in need in this area who will be impacted when we have further price increases in gas and electricity and the cost of living during the cold winters? My second question is, when did the review of Sheffield City Council community buildings start? What is the review for? When is the end date of the review? Why can't community buildings be used by the community while the review is taking place? Or why have previous requests for the community to use the community buildings in Strabbrook not been acted on? Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. That was a very painful hearing. And I'm going to ask councillor Fox to respond to your urgent questions.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And thank you, Helen, and for everything that you're doing at the Link. And I know it's appreciated by the community in Strabbrook and by your local councillors. Lord Mayor, when you've been there and you've not got two eighties turned up together, when you've got wig falls coming through, repossessing your furniture and you're dependent on soup kitchens, we all understand that we thought we wouldn't be back here 40 years in the future. But we're not only in a place now where people are going to the food bank and handing food back because they can't afford to cook the food, but we're now looking at warm banks and how we use our community buildings to use through winter, as we all know. And every one of us in here knows exactly what we're facing. Lord Mayor, and that's why this city council, under my leadership, took the decisive action, that we put it under an incident management so that we could direct across this city the impact of inflation, the massive increases on energy bills and the real impact on families and communities, including communities like Strabbrook. The council has agreed at its first draft at the S and R committee on the 5th of July that we'd get a number of key points areas that we would address. So we put through at the budget, Lord Mayor, 200K and with support for local food banks and other food poverty and the Food Access Plan. We've also put another 5.2 million of crisis support for housing tenants through the Housing Support Funds. And as you know, we've also put holiday food vouchers over the summer holidays for families with children who receive free school meals, as well as the holiday activities and food programmes. Lord Mayor, we are leading a cross-party strategic response to this crisis, which includes partners from across the public, private and voluntary sectors. The group are meeting readily over the summer to consider the move and we are theming at the way that we address this crisis in front of us. We've addressed the food. We're now going on to financial insecurity, energy, housing. But we'll also work closely with those local area committees to ensure that the specific needs of places like Strabbrook, like the Link, are taken into account and working with local councillors. You did ask Ellen about the community buildings. Since I've been the leader for the last 14 months, I can't tell you how many local councillors have come to me with requests for community buildings for community organisations in their area. But we have a review. We've now moved to a committee system. We have got to do that. But we are in a painful... but we are in a painful financial situation within this council. And we've got to work across all organisations, looking at where we deliver for that community cohesion. So we will push ahead with this community review. The buildings are a real issue, but we can't just give organisations a building because we know that the work then, if they're not done correctly, that then can be a millstone around those organisations next, that they spend most of their time trying to finance the rent of that building instead of delivering of what they want to do. So we want to work with local voluntary organisations, we've got like managers out there with local councillors and chairs. So we will speed up the review, Ellen, and we will try and meet as many of these targets. But again, I'd like to put on record my thanks to your voluntary organisation and all voluntary organisations and everybody who's facing this crisis. I don't know how some people are surviving at this moment in time, Lord Mayor, and anything we can do, we will not yield from that. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
So can I just go back to you, councillor Fox? And you said you're going to speed up the review. Do we, do we have any sort of idea of the time scale on it, please? So that the Stradbroke people have an idea when we're going to be able to come back to them?
Obviously, Lord Mayor, we work through a committee system now, I'm not going to throw it on the chair of the Communities' Committee, councillor Richard Williamson, but I'm sure straight after this, we will, we will look into this straight away, Lord Mayor, and we'll have a word with the chair, vice chair, et cetera, cross-party. Thank you.
Thank you. Was that helpful? Good. Right. Our next questions come from Robin Hughes. Can, Robin, can you come to the microphone, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. So members may recall my previous questions to council on the 2nd of February and the cooperative executive on the 20th of April regarding a proposed housing development in the village of Worrell, which would entail the demolition of a historic 18th century farmhouse and barn and impact the setting of listed buildings unless the council agreed to sell a small piece of land on Wallshaw Road as alternative access, which is the council's preferred alternative. I was assured then that the urgency was understood, an extension of time would be sought and the sale of the land would be negotiated. Regrettably, this remains unresolved. The extension expired on the 29th of April and there has been no visible progress. Having originally tried to push the developer towards a planning appeal at a time when this was no longer legally possible, the council now appears to be dragging its feet despite members repeatedly promising action. The pointless and avoidable loss of historic buildings becomes increasingly likely. So my questions are, will this council, one, urgently instruct its officers to conclude the sale of this land without further delay? Two, make public the reasons for its failure to do so before now? And three, update its property strategy so that it states clearly that where council property is important to the preservation and public enjoyment of designated heritage assets or their settings, this will be given priority? Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. And I'm going to call upon councillor Julie Growcut to answer your questions.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Good afternoon, Robin, good to see you again. In relation to question one, officers informed me that they've held several discussions with the owners and their representatives regarding the sale of the land and that this is a commercial negotiation and the buyer is trying, is in their view, trying to look at other angles before they reach an agreement with the council. We are willing to sell the land and we are happy to continue the negotiations with the agents, so officers are doing their very best to get that moving along. In relation to question two, any sale requires a willing buyer and a lit seller. Until both parties reach financial agreement, which reflects the value of the land in question and achieves best consideration with the council, we are unable to move this sale forward. Clearly, the owners are reluctant to purchase the additional land and we are still trying to make this, this work within existing boundaries without any additional expense. Officers have engaged with the owners and have shown willing to progress the sale, but ultimately, we can't force a sale, but we are working very hard to try and make that happen, let's say. And in respect of the third point you raised, this is already a consideration in the use of our assets, but this does not mean that we will give our assets away. Legally, we must achieve best consideration when considering selling the land. Thank you for the questions, Robin.
Thank you, councillor Growcut. Our next question is from Bridget Ingle. Can Bridget come to the microphone, please? Is Bridget here? Okay, as Bridget isn't here, can I ask that councillor Martin Smith send her a written response, please?
Absolutely, Lord Mayor.
Had our five questions about Palestine. Our next speaker, our next questioner, sorry, is Mr Nasser Rauf. So could you come to the microphone, please, Nasser?
Good afternoon, councillors, good afternoon, Lord Mayor. Hope you're all in the best of spirit. First of all, can I start off by expressing my condolences, thoughts and prayers go out to the family of Clive Stevenson, what an amazing asset he was to Sheffield City Council and an officer that went way beyond his job and the call of duty that he had to make sure that our drivers, our members were always well protected. And I'm sure councillors in this house are very pained at the minute with his sudden loss and all we can do is send our best wishes and condolences and prayers to his family and his loved ones that he leaves behind. So unfortunately, it's sorry news to hear. With the question I had for you today was on, with questions in three parts, it was on behalf of my business, I'm a postmaster at Banacross Post Office in Sheffield, S11, and we have a council proposal at this moment in time across all businesses. We formed a group saying no to red lines and this was based upon businesses that did not want to see red lines being put down in front of their businesses due to the financial impact and some of the consequences that were going to be experienced by those businesses and the vulnerable users that use our businesses as well, such as, like for example, the post office people coming disabled, our, some of our pensioners that come in to send parcels to their loved ones, provided during Covid-19 a very vital service for the community to use. So my three questions are as follows. First one, why have the results of a business impact assessment not been published or done with the businesses on the impact the red lines will have on our businesses in the area? Are the council going to heavily compensate the losses that are forthcoming for local businesses upon the implementation of these red lines that the councils are proposing? And also, the third question, with the declining bus services, we hear from Sheffield Star and other news agencies, and including the council, many councillors that have been quoted on social media saying, one in three buses will be caught if the bus cuts out to go ahead in public transport. Why then are we pushing as a, as a council, why are you pushing for more bus lanes to be created when there will be no buses travelling through these bus lanes? This just, this simply just doesn't make sense and it's illogical from us and the users of our businesses. And to put these three questions into context, businesses at this moment in time are heavily struggling through dealing with the impact of Covid-19. It has decimated many of our businesses and estimated much of our customer base. And there have been long-term loans that have been taken out during the Covid-19 pandemic, Lord Mayor, that have not yet been repaid and the businesses are struggling to pay. We're having to deal with a battle of cost of crisis where we're having to pay staff more, we're having to pay out costs more for everything. And that in turn is going to have a very negative impact on our businesses. What more needs to be happened on this council's wake, on this council's books for us, for you guys to actually see sense and to remove this proposal from the table? We as businesses therefore requesting to remove these lines as soon as possible from the proposals to clear the uncertainty hanging on our heads. We need to get on with the survival of our businesses, as I've said, and through what can only be described as the most challenging time for our businesses. Last time we came in front of yourselves during the Covid-19 pandemic, I came and we got reassurances from the council, the structure that you had in place then, that things would be done and we would be listened to. Unfortunately, months later, we're still in this uncertainty, Lord Mayor, where we cannot get any answers. So we're urgently asking for that clarity. And please remember, your silence as councillors today means the death of our livelihoods tomorrow. End the uncertainty, take out the red lines of the scheme and let's get on with the rest of the changes. Thank you, Lord Mayor, thank you councillors.
Thank you, Nasser. Can I call upon councillor Julie Growcut, co-chair of the Transport Regen and Climate Policy Committee to respond?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, thank you, Nasser, for your question. I think we know enough of the members in this chamber and I think you've seen quite a lot of the members in this chamber in and around the area discussing the red lines with you over the last few months. Everybody is firstly acutely aware of the concerns that you raise and are also very acutely aware of the situation that we now find ourselves in with the cost of living crisis with the implications that that means. We have a scheme, we as a council have a responsibility to go through a process, but at this moment in time, no decision has been made in relation to the, in relation to the red lines. That will go to the committee, I'm sure you will be, you know, you'll be very welcome at the committee meeting when those issues are discussed, but please don't go away from here thinking today that, you know, it's a done deal, it certainly isn't, there is a process to go through. But to deal with the specific points that you raised, as part of the outline business case for the project to the South Yorkshire Mural Combined Authority, an economic assessment has been undertaken to determine the wider costs and benefits of the proposed project. However, an economic assessment has not been undertaken on the impact of the proposed red lines on the businesses along Abidale and Echolsall roads, as the red lines would not increase existing restrictions along most of the corridor and would still enable parking or loading and unloading outside the red line routes hours of operation. Businesses would not be able to load and unload on double red lines, unlike they can now do on double yellow lines, but we would look to introduce more loading bays to serve businesses if the red lines are progressed. The red lines are being proposed to allow enhanced enforcement of loading and waiting restrictions along Abidale and Echolsall road with the cameras. Any changes to the lines require us to advertise a traffic regulation order before the changes are made. No decision has yet been made on what the changes will include in that traffic regulation order along those corridors. And of course, as with all traffic regulation orders, you will have a further opportunity to comment on all aspects, whatever is in that order, when it's put out there. In response to the second point you raised, red lines would allow enhanced enforcement of existing restrictions along Abidale and Echolsall road with the cameras. These lines would not increase existing parking restrictions along most of the corridors, though loading and unloading is prohibited on red lines for most drivers. Therefore, as part of our investigations, if red lines are introduced, additional parking bays to serve businesses will be considered. And for the final point that you raised, it is not proposed to increase the length of the bus lanes on Abidale or Echolsall road, although other bus priority measures are proposed along both corridors to enhance bus reliability and consistency and to improve access along the corridors and into the city centre. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Growcut. Our next questions, please, can Sam Wakelin come to the microphone to ask your questions?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I want to thank our previous speakers raising the cost of living because I want to ask about the climate crisis and I want to emphasise that I believe these are one and the same. The end of the month and the end of the world are the same fight. It's capitalism which extracts money from our communities while treating the vulnerable as disposable. And so this meeting here marks three years since the council devoted a full meeting to expert climate science advice, as we've already heard, and it showed the need for dramatic and immediate changes and we're now three years on. The council hasn't been idle, there's been plenty of greenwash, but it continues to add to the problem. It has expanded the Ring Road, leading to more traffic, and plans to spend millions more expanding it yet again at Shalesmore. And even this week, on our hottest day ever recorded, our council leader has been campaigning to expand an airport. He's also asked to be held personally responsible on climate change. So I ask, does he understand that our climate is a life and death crisis, not just for our children and their future, not just for those across far more vulnerable parts of the world who have faced these effects for decades, but for all of us here and now? So as people of Sheffield have been suffering and dying due to record-breaking extreme heat, what does councillor Fox say to those who have had work disrupted, lost homes to fire, and even sadly lost loved ones? Because when he says that he plans to take people with us, it's sounding less like an invitation and more like a threat. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Wakelin. Can I ask councillor Fox to respond to his questions?
Sorry, Lord Mayor, I was just, I've heard many languages used in this chamber, but asking another human being what he says to somebody who's lost a loved one, whether it be through climate change, cost of living, cancer, pandemic, I think we have to realise what the language means. I understand about getting the point, but there's a language barrier. If you're accusing certain people of language, then we have to think through what we actually say, Lord Mayor. And I can understand why people would use that language, but us councillors are elected from the community, we're human beings, we're not machines, we don't know how to do empathy along the way. So coming out, I just ask, I make a public plea, when people come to ask questions of any of us, just realise that language does count and the way that we're able to portray and that we are people from the community, we eat with our community, we drink with our community and we feel what our communities are going through. I just put that out there, Lord Mayor. One of the aims since I became leader was to try and soften the rhetoric and get more cross-party working so we're not making things more and more personal. But I have asked people to hold me to account on a number of issues. Lord Mayor, for the avoidance of doubt, I firmly believe we're in the midst of a climate emergency and we must take strong action. And to lead from the front to tackle this, the point I was trying to make in the interview I had last year with Tribune was that climate emergency is also a climate justice, it's social justice and that what we must do as a city to tackle that global eating, and we've got to take people with us. The learnings from the tree debate and issues show that we've got to take people with us. If we want to accelerate, we have to take people with us. It may be hard conversations that we have to have with our communities, but to get this accelerated, we have to take people with us. We don't have to make their lives worse, Lord Mayor. And it's no good enacting measures on people that they will be totally opposed to. We're seeing at this moment in time some of the issues ongoing as we're trying to roll our active travel. And I plead to anybody who's pulling these planters about, taking absolutely access, work with us, talk to us, local councillors, cabinet members, sorry, chairs, chairs of committees are going out to these open shops, that some of the rhetoric that's coming back is hostile and aggressive and abrasive. We should be able, certainly after this pandemic, to talk our problems through, Lord Mayor. Yes, we have, of course, the need to tackle the climate emergency, but this doesn't mean that we shouldn't handle it in a fair way that brings people along with us. We need clean growth, that means... That means we all need to be doing what we can to tackle this climate change against and whilst ensuring that this is seen as not only as a necessity, but it is a positive action on people and our community lives. Lord Mayor, I was asked what I've done, if I can just give the example of how the Labour administration rolled out the Clean Air Zone. It was us that went with government, it's us that worked hard to get the 24 million, and it is us that we worked hard to ensure that it's targeted against the most polluting buses and taxis and vans and coaches and lorries. For me, this transition must be done fairly, with less polluting private cars, except with the right financial support package for that transition. We've heard, and many times I was sat with councillor Douglas Johnson on conferences with taxis, listening to the difficulties that they are going through and the decisions that they are going to have to make, with businesses that councillor Nazar Raruff spoke with, other councillors and ourselves on Ecclesall Road, about the issues that they're facing as they're coming out of this crisis. For me, Lord Mayor, we have got to be able to not only allow people to drive cars, but drive clean cars, Lord Mayor, and that is a transition that we cannot back away from. Another example is within our housing strategy. We're committed to getting Sheffield housing stock to next zero, but this has got to be done whilst delivering affordability, and those tenants are facing today the highest inflation rate in 40 years, Lord Mayor. I was careless with my words by saying the sky won't fall in tomorrow, and I was trying to say that, yes, we have a climate emergency, but immediacy doesn't mean that tackling it should be on the backs of the poor and the vulnerable. I'm on about. Labour councillors made Sheffield the first local authority in this country to ban fracking. We did the Clean Air Zone, Lord Mayor, we did the Smoke Free. We've also brought in the commitment of brownfield sites will be used for housing developments to protect our green spaces, and we have a strong record of promoting renewable energy. As the council is, it now purchases electricity generated from 100% renewable sources. We've invested 53 million in our housing stock for the insulation of those homes, new roofs for those homes. We are doing our part, and we are working with those anchor organisations to come along with us, to clean up their buildings, to clean up their vehicles. And it is on the later budget amendment in March, when we committed to investing 3.5 million in supporting renewable energy in our estates, especially our community hubs such as schools, libraries, community centres, and reviewing our council stock, as we've said, we've got to visit and look at warm banks and warm places for our people, our vulnerable people, people who are in work, the working poor, Lord Mayor. We've got to take people with us on this journey. This council, under Labour leadership, has also spent tens of millions on sustainable transport initiatives, including active trial, active travel, cycle lanes, bus lanes, when now we are at another crossroads, because everything we are doing is around public transport, and we've been told a third of those routes are now going to be cut across. How are we going to survive? And we will have got notice and motions on that. These Tory cuts have got to stop. But we, Lord Mayor, are working within an envelope. We are now cross-party, we are working with those committees. All I ask is that the people of Sheffield, come, join the debate, come with us. That's the way we'll accelerate, and that's where we will prove, and under my leadership, we will take the people with us. I know that may be hard for some people, it may be difficult conversations, but it's the right conversation to have, Lord Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Fox. Our next questioner is Love Day Herridge, and I believe that she isn't here, so I am going to ask councillor Richard Williams to... Correct. No, no, it actually does say it would be Richard.
Not going to fight it for it, will it?
Okay. Well, anyway, I'm going to ask Martin to just respond to her question in writing, please.
Absolutely, Lord Mayor.
It's two letters you're going to be sending. Right, we have two further questions. So our first, our next questioner is Val Wilson. And please can Val come to the microphone to ask your question?
Thank you, thank you. Good afternoon, Lord Mayor and councillors and MPs, and the public as well. My problem has been going on for over two years now. I am very badly disabled, and I've been in my bungalow for 49 years. Next month, on the 23rd of August, Thursday it was, and what it is, now I need a safety flooring down, auto safety flooring. And they keep saying they've sent an inspector, they haven't sent an inspector, they have sent two plasterers at different times, and it was one of the third times that this workman came, lovely, lovely fellow, and he says to me, it's the auto safety one you need in your kitchen and your bathroom, because I've had my bathroom adapted for my safety uses, except for the flooring. I have had two bad accidents. I had a black and blue hand as I slipped, there was nothing there, that's how shiny and slippery my floor is, and my hand went into cupboards. Last time, I got a big bruise here, and I fell into the cupboard and broke the brackets, which is still broken now. And I have phoned Rachel Stainrod last week twice, in one afternoon, she was on the estate, and she never got back to me, and she still hasn't got back to me now. And I do think she wants to click up the backside to get something done, so that it's making it safer for me, because after 49 years, I am not going anywhere, I'm staying in my bungalow, which I should be able to do. And also, and also, I have got some pictures of a tree that is growing on my veranda, which is council property, and I pay my rent to council. And she says to me, can you ask one of your family to cut it down? And I'm not usually lost for words, and Shinad knows that and everybody else, but I was absolutely gobsmacked to that, what she said. I shouldn't have to ask my family to do anything to my bungalow, I ain't paying rent, in fact, I'm 93 pound in credit, that's how good I am at paying. And not only that, three years ago, I suffered a very bad accident, and the council would not take notice of this, I've got the photos, I've got the proof. I had a very, very bad solicitor that just wrote me off by giving me an ultimatum to pay 245 pound an hour, which he knows I was knowing low fee, for an engineer, structural engineer, to come up, because they got the wrong tree, the council, and we got the right tree on the pictures. All my facial head injuries I got, I'd been to the Royal Voluntary Service, where I'd been for three years at the spinal and neuro rehabilitation centre at the Northern General, as well as three years previous at the Alhamshire. And I was walking down Saisham Hill with two friends, because I usually have a taxi, which they used to pay for me. And when I went to the shops at the First Park, this friend and neighbour said, will you go in, Val? I says, I'm just going in them two shops, Michelle. She says, well, I wait for you. I says, well, I'm having a taxi, like I always do, because I can't walk far. So she says, well, I'll walk with you, you'll be all right, we'll catch bus. So as I'm walking down, the concrete was raised up, and my stick went backwards, I went with my face straight into the giant roots of the tree, and I had to wait an hour and 20 minutes for an ambulance to come and take me to hospital. And my face was like I'd been in the ring with three Mike Tysons, and I had to wait five hours because I was put by one of the sisters at the Northern General Emergency Department. She put me in the full waiting room, and I wasted five hours. Now I could have had a brain hemorrhage, or I could have had a bleed on the brain, because it was swollen up three times its size, and I have got the photos to prove it. So I'm afraid I'm not getting anywhere with the council.
Val, is this two different questions? Because the question I've got down is about...
Well, this is the last piece I'm saying, Shinad.
It's about your house.
Pardon?
So we've got, we've got question about your house.
My bungalow on the front, it's a tree growing.
Is this from First Park now, your accident, or is this...
The other one, yes, yes.
Right, so you've got two different questions.
Yeah, but nobody's listened to me over that, Shinad.
Right, and so you've got two questions or another one as well?
Well, I've done with my questions now, love.
Yeah.
But I would like to see something done, because as I say, Rachel Stainrod, it is falling on deaf ears.
Right.
And so is a friend of mine who's Albanian, she has a problem with language.
Let's just sort this out now. You've brought one question that Douglas is going to answer.
Yeah.
You've got another question, which it sounds like your ward councillor should be helping you with, and then you've got a third question about a friend of yours, which, again, I think your ward councillor will help with. So shall we ask Douglas to start off with your advice?
Yes, please, if you don't mind, yes.
Not at all.
Thank you very much.
Off we go.
Thank you.
Thank you, Val, for coming, and sorry to hear about your falls and the long wait in the ambulance. I know you came and did a presentation a couple of years ago, so I do remember that. Probably the best thing is that we haven't got more detail, if you could leave the details of...
Can I have a little bit clearer, please? Because I can't read the back.
Right, I'm just going to have to shout up, because I know that, Lord Mayor, we'll want to get on with the meeting. I'm just asking, are you able to give some of your details to the officers who are attending about what's needed there? And we'll ask someone from the Housing Service to come back and answer you in due course. Thank you.
Val, as you all know, we're terrified of you, so we'll make sure that Douglas does indeed follow up. And I'm going to ask Dawn, your local councillor, just to pick up on your second question.
Hi, Val. I'm not frightened of you, we know each other really well, don't we? But if, just after we just finish this bit, if you and I can go into the side room, and then I can get all of the information from you, and then we can follow things up, is that all right, Val? Thank you. We'll do it now, okay? Well, I'll come down now. You're welcome.
There we go, then. And our final question is from Jonathan Marsden, and it's about mental health in the community, about triaging service users better. Jonathan?
Hey, Lord Mayor, love you. My daughter says thank you for helping her as well with school. Right. I used to be a manager for Dobbs County Council with mental health services, and I've been doing some mental health work around Sheffield. I do a lot, a lot unpaid as well. What I've started realising is, we seem to have, as we've got cutbacks in Sheffield, we've got a lot of cutbacks, and it's going to bone now. What I've started realising is the triage ain't working. We've got this, we've got this situation where we're supposed to be put in, for instance, I've been looking after three women who've got send kids, right, each of them have got send kids. Now, they're not being seen as, not more important, but more urgent than someone who's on their own, yeah? If the female with the family fails to get help with her mental health and social services, the whole family fails, yeah? Now, I've had a word with Greg Fell about it, and Mike Hunter as well, Dr Mike Hunter, so they're going to take it to board. But I just want to make you aware that it seems to be, it needs a system shift. We need to start, it's like we're rearranging deckchairs on Titanic, and we've forgot to shout women and children first. Does that make sense? Can I leave it there?
Right. Sorry. Okay, so it's councillor Argentio who's going to respond to you, Mr Marsden.
Thank you, Jonathan, Jonathan, for bringing, thank you, Jonathan, for bringing this to us today, and we only received this today, so I haven't got a longer answer for you. So what I'm going to do is see what's in place at the moment, I totally take your point, and I'm going to ask officers to just let us know what's in place at the moment and how it works, and I will get a written answer for you. And if you want to come in and have a chat, then just to get in contact, and we can arrange a meeting to just go into more details about your points. Okay, thank you.
Right, thank you very much, councillor Argentio. That concludes this item, and I am going to suggest a 10-minute, and I shall be very strict on it, break, just to run outside, get some hotter air, and then come back in. Members' questions. This is the last session I'm going to chair, because I'm then going to go and lie down, and Anne, who has just disappeared, will be back in a minute, and she will chair the bit when we're discussing motions from groups, okay? So, questions on urgent business. And I'm aware that councillor Shafak Mohammed wishes to ask a question to the leader of the council relating to the future of Doncaster Sheffield Airport. In accordance with the provisions of Council Procedure Rule 16.6 (Roman numeral 2), I propose to grant permission for councillor Mohammed to ask his question, which will be answered by the leader of the council, councillor Terry Fox. Councillor Mohammed.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, for allowing me the opportunity to quiz the leader of council. It's a shame the member of the public's not here, because, Lord, sorry, Lord Mayor, my question to councillor Fox is, what steps does the leader of council intend to take to help secure the future of Doncaster Airport? Because if we lose that airport, travellers from this region aren't going to stop travelling, they're just going to have to go further, and that's not going to help the issues around tackling congestion or climate change. So that's the simple question to the leader of council. Thank you.
Councillor Fox.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you, councillors, in fact, for that question. Since the announcement, and we had no prior knowledge of that announcement, it took us by surprise. We had an emergency meeting with leaders and the mayor at that moment in time, and Doncaster councillor Glynn Jones was leading on that with their chief executive. Lord Mayor, we've had a number of meetings at this moment in time. Just last night, I met with the other South Yorkshire leaders, plus the mayor, plus our MPs, and the shadow minister for transport, Louise Hague. With the other South Yorkshire MPs, we are pushing hard at the moment. It's not clear what the ask is of the era now. They are out on a six-week consultation. We have asked that we extend that consultation period so that we can have meaningful talks. The mayor and officers from the MCA are meeting as we... The mayor and officers from the MCA are meeting as we speak. So we are trying everything we possibly can. Councillor Mark Jones is going to a meeting on Tuesday. We have got a meeting with subsidiary companies on Friday to have a look at the jobs losses in the supply chain on the airport. Lord Mayor, we are working in coordination through the MCA and with Doncaster and the other authorities about how we can assist with the talks and with what the ask is. My understanding is that the airport is meeting with ministers later this week as well, with government ministers. But we will try and do whatever we possibly can at this moment in time. It's a real blow, not only for those who have got holidays booked, but the economic regeneration of the area and the 800 jobs that we know of at this moment in time that is under threat with that consultation that's ongoing. There's also a massive impact on freight and obviously that is a key driver along with the other areas. And also with the lack of ferries that are going from ill is putting a lot of our businesses under pressure, certainly with fuel prices at this time. I will keep council up to date and through S and R and probably Finance Committee as well, where those talks get to. And we'll probably report back after the next Tuesday's meeting when councillor Mark Jones will attend that meeting. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Fox. Okay. We're now on item 5.2, which is questions on the joint authorities. And following what has been the state of emergency in South Yorkshire with all of our emergency services, I'm just going to ask councillor Dams, who is Chair of the Fire Authority, to say a few words about what our emergency services have been doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd like to ask council support for my request that we send a letter, ask the Lord Mayor to send a letter to the chief fire officer, thanking, asking him to pass on our thanks and appreciation for the work that they're doing in these very difficult situations. Whenever I see on the news in our house feeling quite hot and you see those people going towards a fire in full fire kit, it must be dreadful. And we also need to remember that we need to thank the support staff as well. So I hope people would support that and I'm sure the Lord Mayor would like that support. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you, Tony, for inviting me to second this motion. I'd just like to say that in seconding the thanks to the Fire Authority, to the Fire Brigade, to just apologise on behalf of all politicians across the country for not tackling the climate emergency and heatwaves and floods are the sign of things to come and the plight of the Fire Brigade is just going to get worse and worse. So, you know, it's not called a crisis or an emergency for nothing and we need to crack on. So thank you, Lord Mayor, thank you, Tony.
Thank you councillor Turpin, I think.
And I think we want to extend that also to our police service and also to our ambulance services. And, and also our own council staff who are once again facing another crisis and are rising to it magnificently. So I think we'll agree on that as well, please, colleagues. Thank you. Okay, sorry, are there any more questions to any of the members of the council who are part of the Joint Authorities for Fire and Rescue pensions or indeed the South Yorkshire Mayor or Combined Authority? No? In which case we will move on. You should all have a copy of the questions to members. And as usual, I will go through them page by page. And if anybody has one supplementary question to the question they have asked, then please indicate to me. So, page one. Kel Suprise, councillor Mohammed.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, it's question three to the leader of council. From those answers, councillor Fox, it's absolutely clear that anyone waiting two hours forty-six minutes or two hours, what was the next one? Two hours nineteen minutes to get help on a council tax inquiry line is totally unacceptable. And I just want to ask you, do you want to take this opportunity to actually apologise to those people for the poor service that they have consistently had over several months? And can you tell us what your intentions are to ensure that people aren't waiting hours in terms of their inquiries when it comes to council tax? Because it can be quite distressing for people.
Councillor Fox.
Lord Mayor, I think what I would say is, when we have Val come into this council about her bungalow, the money that we have invested in call centres, we've put extra staff into there, we've invested in local area committees, we've invested housing officers, restructuring, EMIRs, we failed. None of us can sit here happy that that individual has had to come through an horrendous journey, put herself in front of eighty-four of us. I know some of us are better looking than others, but we'll leave it there. But for Val to come into this environment and to raise, we failed. That I can't come out with any pretty words that say any other. What we have to do is get that delivery plan of which I am now working with officers so that we are able to challenge, to measure performance and help to account through those committees cross-party so that we make sure that we're delivering. We have to get customer excellence right and we have to do it here and there, Lord Mayor. And if we ever needed an example of that, we've had it in front of us today. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Page two. Page three. Page four. Ooh, 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 sorry Douglas. Which page, Douglas?
Page three, question eight. I don't normally ask a question about something that seems to have been answered by me, but I just want to clarify here, as a point of accuracy. On question eight, the second paragraph is not from me and I just want to have that deleted from the record there. I don't know who wrote that or who inserted this document, but just for accuracy, that was not from me. And just to clarify as well, the reason for not asking that to happen, I mean, I wouldn't propose that simply because it's a routine rent recovery situation. I'm not going to ask officers to do more work than necessary when it hasn't been asked for. As I said, I just want to draw the fact that, yeah, the questions that we put forward do not reflect what I've authorised. Thanks, sir.
Lord Mayor, I did have that down actually, but I was going to ask Douglas further down the line because there was clearly two answers to the same question, one now on this page with that paragraph missing. You can see it now, Dougie, I've written it on there.
We'll await your next question with great interest, councillor Shafak. Page four. Mike.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. It's two years now since the Children and People scrutiny committee asked the Cabinet to think again on two occasions about the insourcing of youth services. We're now two years on from that. And in those two years, the £2 million set aside in the first year was used for laptops for kids in May. In the second year was handed back. And we've only just got a policy in place to do this. Can the leader of the council please confirm that in future, when it comes to a major strategic decision such as outsourcing or insourcing, that there's proper evaluation, costing and prescrutiny carried out? So when it's approved, abstracting resources, we are ready to go to take this initiative on and not try to work it out after the decisions are made. Thank you.
Councillor Fox, would you like to respond?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, thank you councillor Lever for the question. The issue here is now is that Sheffield is now the national leader. People are looking exactly what we're doing with youth work. We've took the lead. We are now having a real struggle recruiting youth workers. For years, youth work has shrunk and we have been able to kind of stabilise that. And the other big issue is play, play workers. Where is a real shortage across this city with playwork? We hadn't had the time, respect, of waiting for those resources to get in. We had to get hold of this situation for the youth in our city. We've invested heavily in our youth and that's part of this council's intervention-prevention strategy. We are rolling that out. We are committed to provide three sessions each in every ward and we are working, and we've now recruited a manager, I don't know if you've met Chelsea Ryman, on working with that. And each like will now have its own youth manager. I know it may have took time to deliver across the piece. We are working at pace, but there is a real shortage of youth workers across this country. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. So we're on page five. Oh, councillor Lever again.
Yeah, thanks for the response councillor Fox. And on question four about recruitment of youth workers, it does stay stating on the written questions that we've got a 50% deficit and we're looking to recruit. Have we considered going back to Sheffield Futures to discuss as a strategic partner how that initiative goes forward? Because they, at the time, two years ago, have no problem with recruitment of youth workers. Thank you.
Right.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. First of all, I have read the meetings with Karen Chalice from Sheffield Futures on a number of issues on a regular basis. The staff, I believe, were chupied over and came over and there was a process that when they went through. We will look to recruit youth workers wherever we can. There is a shortage of them around the country, as I say. That's due to have been a lack of investment and putting youth at the front. That's why nationally they're looking at what we're trying to deliver in Sheffield. Chelsea is working hard to get that delivered. We'll look anywhere where we can recruit qualified competent staff to deliver for our children in this city. We've got voluntary organisations out there that we're working with as well. We will work with anybody and anyone who is willing to come and work for us.
Thank you. Page six. Page seven. Douglas.
Thank you, page six, page seven. Questions to the leader, thanks councillor Fox. On question one, it's really about the customer service improvement plan. We've already heard that mentioned there and thanks for your words on that. But you said in your written reply that there now is a customer service improvement plan. I very much welcome that, thank you. The next step will involve discussion with the Stratton Resources Committee, there'll be further discussion with the chairs of the committee. And I just want to ask, first of all, when will that happen? And as we now in a committee system, will that be extended not just the chairs but also the spokespeople? Because it's something of interest to all parties, in fact, the whole city.
Councillor Fox.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Within this, I don't, and thanks for the question councillor Johnson, what I don't want to do is attack this in a adult way. We have got to join this up with a number of the delivery issues that we've got challenges this year. So that's why it's crucial that we look at the performance and data across a lot and most departments in this council. We've got a massive job in front of every councillor in this. And for me, that delivery plan, once it's agreed, will be disseminated across all councillors, all committees, because there'll be onus on all of those committees to deliver those services in those areas in those budgets. So it's crucial that we are all signed up to this for delivery. So once we have got that across the piece, ready to put out, it'll not only be shared with members, chairs and vice chair spokespeople, but it will be delivered across this council because every member who's sat on a policy committee will be able to hold everybody to account. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Fox.
Lord Mayor.
Sorry?
Question two. So question two is, again councillor Fox, in your role as a member of the Combined Authority, which is an important role, and we're going to hear more later about bus services and the need for better public transport in the city. But we've asked there about recognising whether public transport and individual private car ownership aren't really two sides of the same coin. We all talk about the need to get people out of their own cars and onto buses and trams where they possibly can. And it's not always, I say this, that Sheffield is a more progressive authority than some in South Yorkshire, and this is why I'm asking the context of South Yorkshire as a whole. And we don't have so much free parking in Sheffield city centre. In other towns in South Yorkshire, we do. And I wanted to ask really whether you recognise that by pursuing those policies which are political choices to support individual car ownership and encourage people to continue driving their cars into town centres, whether you recognise that that is one of the main factors that's undermined public transport in South Yorkshire over many years?
Councillor Fox.
Lord Mayor, thanks for the question councillor Johnson. It's quite clear, we have had an exercise in this city. Just previously, we've had a large parking scheme that's gone out of consultation with members of the public. That vote that came back when we went to that consultation about putting in a parking scheme, a residence parking scheme, came back with a thousand people, residents, who didn't want the scheme and only forty did. Does that mean then that across this city that we enforce on people when they have democratically spoken to us? The key to all of this, again, as I reiterated very early on, is how we take people with us. And myself and yourself, councillor Johnson, have met many of these organisations, businesses, even motorists themselves, to work through those issues. There is a real challenge in front of us, but we've got to be able to meet that together and across the whole city. But we have to do it in an inclusive way. We cannot leave those people with mobility issues and other disabled factors that can't get around this city. We've got to have, be able to be inclusive in all our ways. We will work together. I understand in one of your motions you put that you are against people parking outside their own homes, while if we want people to charge etc in those schemes. For me, it's giving people the choice and if we're going to take people along with us, we have to do that in a fair and democratic way. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Just a point of order, I just want to clarify that...
Now, hang on, what is your point of order?
Sorry, just want to clarify, there is nothing in our motions that says that we object to people parking outside their own houses.
Right, page nine. Page 10. Listen to the previous advice I gave councillor Turpin.
Whatever. Thanks for the answers, Terry, councillor Fox, lots of detail. So the question I ought to ask here is on question three about the, I always get this wrong, independent living scheme at Hemsworth. And you said that there isn't money in the budget to put solar panels on the roof. Well, we've got homegrown grassroots organisation in Sheffield, Sheffield Renewables, who're dying to put panels on the roof at no cost to the council whatsoever. And so I just wondered, can you, what can you do... And so I just wondered, can you, what can you do to make that happen and to kind of grease those wheels for the relevant people to basically get on and take advantage of those free solar panels? Thank you.
I trust that wasn't dying literally. councillor Fox.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can I just take this opportunity to say, if I misquoted councillor Johnson, but I'm sure I've read that in the motions. Thank you, Lord Mayor. But I just thought I'd make a public apology if that is the case, that I have reread that wrong. But that's how I read it. Look, councillor Turpin, I totally agree where you're coming from. And I think the committee that's climate change should explore this at urgency to have a look at getting whatever opportunities are out there to any community building etc. So I would hope that the committee within the transport, redevelopment, climate change, take an urgent look at this. Thank you for raising it.
Thank you councillor Fox. Right, page, I've no idea what page, 11? Let's do 11. Okay, page 14. Page 12.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Terry, so question five, thanks very much for setting out what the constitution says. That is really helpful. I just wondered if this could be an issue that could be investigated at the six-month review in November? The committee system, I mean, yeah, sorry.
I'm going to ask actually councillor Grokka to answer that one.
Thank you. It's really interesting, the number of times over the last sort of 12 months that Terry said to me, I'd like my deputy to deal with that. But today is the first that the Lord Mayor is actually saying it to me. So thank you very much for that. I think that that is something that we would require to get legal advice about. I have absolutely no idea where that stands. I wouldn't want to put the governance committee in a position where they are doing something that is unlawful or outside of what we are allowed to do. So my suggestion would be that in the first instance, we would require some legal advice. Thank you.
Which will happen in due course, I'm sure councillor Turpin. Right, page, did I say we were on page 14? Page 13 councillor Turpin.
Thanks very much. Question eight, Lord Mayor. So the answer to question eight is the answer above. And part of that answer is, I'm not aware of, in the entire history of UK local government, such a proposal has outlined being adopted. Well, actually, I'd like to inform the leader that this exact thing actually happens in Lewis council, where they have no overall control and a modern committee system. And they change their leader every six months between, believe it or not, I live down under green. So I just wondered, so if what...
I think that's very interesting councillor Turpin.
It is interesting.
This is something that we can ask the governance committee to look at.
Yeah, exactly, is that can we make sure that we do have the right information?
And can I just point out that as an enormous city compared to Lewis as a small district, it's a very, very different proposition councillor?
Well, that would need investigating, Lord Mayor. You may be right, you may be wrong.
No, it doesn't need investigating. We know we're a large city compared with Lewis, don't we?
I see the drugs haven't worn off yet, Lord Mayor.
No, no. Otherwise I'd be much more vicious towards you councillor Turpin. We've taken that point. I suggest you just sit down at this point.
I was just going to ask to make sure that we're going to have the right information so that we can make an informed decision under investigation of all proposals.
Thank you councillor Turpin. Let's carry on. Page 14. 15. 16. Oh, please don't give me grief Angela. You're making an assumption there, Lord Mayor.
It's on question two. Are there any plans to reintroduce the red now clear sacks for this coming year? Seeing that this is about the students move out and the disaster that it has been this year. Are there any plans to spend £2,000 to save a lot more in clearance?
councillor Orton.
Thank you councillor Agenda. I think the point is very well made. I think the thrust of the answers to your questions indicate that perhaps it wasn't a good idea. And I'm certainly keen that we do look at it in good time for the next academic year. Obviously, it's not something the committee has done yet with its work programme, but I'm very keen that we do. Thank you.
Right, I've been informed that our 30 minutes is almost up. So Angela, is your question urgent or do you think somebody else ought to have a go? Carry on.
On question four, I understand that there are some legal kind of constraints in terms of the landlords. But straight after this council meeting, I'm going to a Good Neighbourhood Forum where the two universities are going to be present as well as community groups in my ward. And it's all mostly about relationship with the students. So can the council commit and the committee commit to making better links with the landlords? Because at the moment, we haven't got very good links.
Thank you councillor Agenda.
Thank you councillor Orton.
Agenda for that point, sorry Lord Mayor. Thank you for that point. I mean, I'm not sure whether such a link would fall under our committee or housing. I think obviously, good relationships with landlords is good. And when it comes to students, we tend, I believe as authorities, tend to manage that through our relationship with the universities, which I would hope to continue. But, you know, I'm happy to consider ideas we have for improvements in that regard. Thank you.
Right, and with that, your 30 minutes are up.
Lord Mayor, if I may...
Oh, no, what's this, Joe?
Well, apologies for one thing. I did time this as starting at 3:53. So I think we have another seven minutes.
Sorry, my lovely advisor here.
That was my note. The other point is that I did promise a verbal response on page 17 to councillor Maruaf Ralph. And if you will allow me, it will only take me a few seconds. Because obviously, it wasn't very clear what the question referred to. I have emailed councillor Ralph a very long list, which I saved us all a large amount of paper by not having printed in this document of contraventions related to traffic and parking. If that is not the information he's looking for, obviously if he can give us more idea of what he's trying to find out, we'll be happy to help.
Why don't you and councillor Ove go off and discuss that, Joe? And then you can circulate your written reply to all of us so that we can delight in it as well. And with that, I'm going to close this part of the meeting. And you're moving on now to to notice of motion. And I am going to leave the very capable Anne Murphy to do this. I'm going to give you all another 10-minute break.
So as you know, the Lord Mayor has asked me to step in because she's got problems with her back. I just want to let councillor Fitz know that I'm not on any drugs. So, I know, not the type he thought that I might be on, or the Lord Mayor was on, so. So can we get to the motions, please? We haven't got a lot of time for motions this afternoon, as I'm sure you're aware. So we will start with item number six. Notice of motion regarding guaranteeing more bus service cuts. Sorry, no more. No more bus service cuts and no more fare increases. We've got a minimum time of 25 minutes for this item. May I call upon councillor Andrew Sanger to move the motion? You can speak for three minutes. councillor Sanger?
Thank you Chair. And I understand from the Lord Mayor that she requires me to change H, little i, the phrase the bus partnership agreement to any bus partnership agreements. I'm happy to make that change as requested by the Lord Mayor. Chair, Sheffield people need buses. Buses that are affordable and reliable and that go where they need to go and are frequent and reliable and are as good as anywhere in the country. Since, Chair, since 1986, we've had 35 years of managed decline of bus services across England outside London. So London has had increased bus patronage, increased routes and managed fares. The rest of England has suffered. Outside the cities, the bus services are generally poor. What we have in the met areas has been managed decline. And we've had lots of different words for it. And we've used the term partnership. Partnership this, partnership that. And it's been a very one-sided partnership. It's been a partnership where the councils have had to provide improvements in terms of bus lanes, in terms of making sure the buses can quickly get to places and the bus companies reduce the routes and increase the fares. And Chair, the crisis, the reason for this notice of motion is that we're now coming to a cliff edge. We're coming to a cliff edge because we've got service reductions at the end of July where routes are going to be cut. But in October, unless something changes, a fifth of Sheffield buses will be removed, a third of bus routes will be removed. Lots of people across Sheffield will no longer have a bus to get them to work, get them to the shops, get them to live their lives. So we need to change. And I have to say, Chair, Mayor Copard has reached out to us more times in the last eight weeks than Mayor Jarvis did in the previous four years. And that's the problem we've had in South Yorkshire. We've not had a vision. We've had to look across the Pennines to Greater Manchester and listen to the words of Mayor Andy Burnham, talking about the importance of buses. We're now even having to listen to our colleagues in West Yorkshire with a much clearer vision of where buses need to be. People of Sheffield are saying loud and clear, we need affordable buses. We need buses that take us, that give us options and choices, that get us to shops, get us to work, get us to leisure facilities. We need those buses. We need to keep the buses we've got. We need a better service. And that's what franchising can give. But more importantly, it's what the regulated service that London has had for 35 years has continued to provide. That's what people of Sheffield need. And we need to say it loud and clear. And we need to work cross-party, across South Yorkshire to make sure we have decent buses for the people of Sheffield. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor Sanger. May I call upon councillor Curtis Crossland to second this motion? You may speak for up to two minutes. This will be Curtis's maiden speech.
Thank you, Lord Mayor? Do you still call you Lord Mayor? Thank you Chair. Sorry, I'm still getting used to the formality of it all. So a lot of people today will quite rightly raise the very valid points that buses are a fantastic way to tackle climate change and reduce congestion. But for a lot of people, including myself, thousands of people across Sheffield, buses are a necessity. So I can't drive due to a disability. I will never be able to drive or even cycle for that matter. So for me, there is no other option. It's either spend money on an expensive taxi or try to tackle our broken public transport system. So I've lived in Sheffield my entire life. I'm 31, so probably one of the younger councillors in this chamber. And I've seen bus cuts come in year after year, routes abandoned, fares hiked, and something needs to change. But later this year, our city faces yet more bus cuts with one in three routes facing the chop. Just put yourself in the position of somebody who relies on buses. Somebody who relies on buses to go to the shops or pick up their kids from school or to go to work and put food on the table. And then one day, that route is no longer in existence. It's gone. How would you cope? How would you get to work? And how would you support your family in that situation? So I actually challenge Mayor, I was going to say Dan Jarvis, Mayor Oliver Copard to travel across this city on a bus. And let's see how long he's waiting for one. And during that time that he's waiting, maybe he could write a letter to the bus companies to finally end the partnership and bring in franchising. Because that's all it would take, a letter to fix our buses. He has the power, the mayor has had the power since 2017 and done nothing with it. So I urge all councillors and I urge the mayor as well to support the contents of this motion. Let's get our buses working for Sheffield and let's get our city moving again. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Crossland. And congratulations on your maiden speech. Well done. Okay, so there are two proposed amendments. And these are numbers one and two. And then on your list of amendments circulated at the meeting. May I call upon councillor Tom Hunt to move amendment number one? You may speak for up to two minutes. This will be Tom's maiden speech as well. councillor Hunt?
Thank you Chair. It's an honour to give my maiden speech. And I'm pleased to follow councillor Crossland's excellent maiden speech. You wait for one maiden speech on buses and two turn up. I'd like to begin by, I'd like to begin by saying thank you to people in Walkley for electing me to represent them. In May, my constituent Angela Brophy wrote to me and said, I and others in the area are suffering due to the unreliability of the 135 bus service, which is the only bus that serves lower Walkley. The bus frequently fails to turn up. But she said, people are relying on this bus to get to work. We need an efficient service for our area. I couldn't agree more. Last month, first announced, they're cutting early morning and evening services on the 135 and they're scrapping weekend services entirely. These cuts take effect on Sunday. They will cut a service that people like Angela in Walkley and Upper Thorpe rely on. And don't get me started on the 95 bus, which is Walkley's other main bus route. We know what happens when services are cut. It leads to a spiral of decline. Less people use the bus and more cuts then often follow. It doesn't have to be like this. The current system is broken, but there is an alternative. Bus franchising would bring buses under public control and give us a say over routes that meet our communities' needs, rather than leaving this in the hands of bus companies. Our mayor Oliver Copard, working with our councils, has already begun work to make franchising happen. But it will take time. And in the meantime, we need to protect the existing network. Yet from September, the government is cutting funding for our buses and commercial operators are withdrawing. We're set to lose up to one-third of services across South Yorkshire from October. One-third. Ministers need to listen to the people of Sheffield, get back around the table and give us the funding that our city needs. If these cuts go ahead, it will be a disaster for the communities that we represent in the short and in the long term. In October, people will find it harder to get to work, to study and to care. It will force people into cars just at a time when petrol prices have skyrocketed and in the same month when energy bills are set to go up by a further 65%. In the long term, there is no route to tackling the climate emergency without a reliable, affordable, low-carbon public transport system. After Sheffield's hottest ever day yesterday, the fierce urgency of tackling this now must be at the forefront of all of our minds. So I also have a message for the bus companies. I get that there are driver shortages. But raise wages and you might find that those shortages are alleviated. So over the next two months, we'll do all we can to protect the bus system. And I'll call on members to work with us to avert this looming disaster. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hunt. And again, congratulations on your maiden speech as well. Well done. Okay, I'm now going to move to the amendment and ask councillor Fram Belbin to second the amendment. councillor Belbin?
Thank you Chair and congratulations to councillors Crossland and councillor Hunt on their maiden speeches. Like many other people in this chamber, I've long been in favour of public control and ownership. ownership of our bus services. So I am delighted that the Labour Mayor of South Yorkshire is now taking steps towards franchising despite the resistance of our Tory government. We've now got the prospect of a bus service that will meet our needs and some joined-up thinking about how decent transport underpins the rest of our ambitions for the city. That's our education, our health, our environment and our economy. And there's no way that this is more apparent than in the north-east of Sheffield, where on the one hand we're being told to put all our GP services under one roof and then on the other hand, being told that the bus service that serves at one roof is being discontinued at the end of this week. I am confused however by aspects of the Lib Dem motion and I appreciate the clarity that councillor Sanger raised about the bus partnerships. But the franchising process takes 18 months and when the motion calls for any available means to make improvements before then, but then suggests terminating our participation in the bus partnership agreement, it seems to me that the new enhanced partnership, which does have additional statutory powers, that is the main means that we have available to work with the bus companies while the franchising process takes place. So I'm not sure what's to be gained from withdrawing from the enhanced partnership at this stage or even if it's possible. I'm also frustrated by aspects of the Greens amendment because some of it does seem determined to pick car owners against everyone else, even while we're acknowledging that our public transport isn't currently fit for purpose. So again, this amendment talks about using all the levers at our disposal, but I think from leading this area last year, the Greens must be fully aware of some of the limitations of the levers that we have available at the moment and the difficulties in joining up our decisions with other things taking place. Many people can't realistically give up their cars at the moment until our public transport is fixed. So I'd like us to be focusing a lot more on that carrot of bus franchising and a bit less of the stick of trying to penalise people out of their cars. And I urge members to support the campaign that Labour has launched today to stop Tory bus cuts.
Thank you councillor Belbin. May I call upon councillor Douglas Johnson to move amendment number two? You may speak for up to two minutes. Councillor Johnson?
Thank you Lord Mayor and thank you. Congratulations first all to councillor Crossland and councillor Hunt. Excellent maiden speeches, some relevant points made in the speech there on access to private transport. I asked the question earlier on, whether there's any recognition here that there is a link between public transport and, so I have supposed support for it, and the role of private car ownership and promoting policies that actively encourage individual car ownership. And councillor Belbin makes a relevant point. No one's saying we should be pitting car owners against bus users or pitting car owners against pedestrians, but there are many people who drive down bus lanes, drive along those RTR roads. There are many people who do have to use cars, but there are also many people who don't and who could if they were able to and they wanted to make the choice to use buses instead, or they could use the tram. Those are the carrots, we need to encourage those people as much as we possibly can. And there are lots of reasons for this. Obviously, one is climate change, hottest day of the year. Yesterday, the arguments were well rehearsed. Clean air, the leader quite rightly mentioned, you know, the really important work that's been done, and I tell you, it is detailed about the clean air zone, it's all about cleaning up the air. You can get 50 people out of 50 private cars and onto one bus, you're well on the way with that. But it's also equality and we keep talking about the cost of living crisis and frankly, I'll just be blunt and say that, you know, if you can afford to buy a car, if you can afford to put petrol in it, you can afford insurance to the big companies, you can afford to make your contribution towards parking charges. So this sort of myth of we must have free parking or the world will end or something, you know, it does not stack up. I also want to make the point of equality, that by authorities continuing to subsidise private car ownership, putting money into roads, offering free parking across South Yorkshire, that is not an equal distribution. It goes to those people who already have cars, it takes away resources from those who have no chance of being able to drive their car into town. So Curtis Crossland made a very good example, while we also have children, we have other disabled people and simply those who can't afford cars. So I'm simply asking people to look out for, you know, those people in our city who can't afford private cars and to support public transport. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Johnson. May I call upon councillor Bernard Little to second the amendment? Councillor Little?
Thank you Lord Mayor. Thank you Chair and congratulations again for some brilliant speeches, particularly from councillor Crossland and councillor Hunt, whom I'm enjoying working with in Walkley. So how is this motion going to stop fare increases, cuts to routes, unreliable services? How will giving notice to terminate any bus agreement help? How will this stop fare increases? Enlisting the full support of the South Yorkshire Mayor Authority, great, but how will this stop cuts to routes? How is reviewing existing bus priorities going to deliver a more reliable, greener, efficient bus service? We need properly funded, reliable, publicly accountable bus services. Services that will serve our communities and enable them to thrive, not more hand-rearing. Thank you. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor Little. We can now move to the debate on this motion. Anybody wishing to speak, you will be allowed to speak for approximately two minutes. Thank you. The first speaker to speak is Richard Shaw. Councillor Shaw?
Thank you Chair. Congratulations to councillors Crossland and Hunt on their excellent maiden speeches. Chair, firstly I'd like to extend our gratitude to the transport workers of Sheffield for enduring the recent weather conditions. The Sheffield Bus Partnership has failed in its goal of a stable bus network, affordable fares and reliable services. It has been a bus cuts partnership. Residents across this city have seen services cut time and time again and from next week it will be even worse. In my own ward from...
Sorry councillor Shaw, I'm going to interrupt. Could we ask Bernard to turn his microphone off please? Sorry, I think it interrupts other speakers. Thank you.
Thank you Chair. In my own ward, the bus service to Chancet Wood, which has been cut many times over the lifetime of the partnership, will be reduced to five services a day between 10am and 2pm. Little use to the many older and disabled residents in the area needing to go to shops in town and even less use for people wanting to commute for work or education. Lib Dem councillors have been calling for years for franchising to be introduced and councillor Belbin said that, you know, it takes 18 months to introduce franchising. Despite the mayor having the power since 2017 to do so, they failed. And instead opted for an enhanced partnership that is weaker, as my colleague councillor Sanger mentioned, than the West Yorkshire partnership. I fear that the only enhancements will be to the failings of the previous partnership as I've already outlined. After four wasted years, Labour's former mayor missed the bus on franchising and as a result, many communities in Sheffield will soon be missing their services. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor Shaw. The next councillor to speak is councillor Richard Williams. Councillor Williams?
Thank you Chair. Firstly, congratulations.
Sorry.
It is actually, unbelievably, councillor Williams' maiden speech.
I'm so sorry councillor, it's councillor Williams' maiden speech.
Okay, firstly, congratulations to councillors Crossland and councillor Hunt. Points well made. As one of the ward members for Stanington, I think it would be remiss for me not to be involved in this debate because in my casework, buses is one of the most popular topics. And here's why. For example, in Warrall, if a planned bus doesn't turn up, it's not a matter of minutes, it's a matter of hours. How can you get to a doctor with that type of efficiency? You just can't. But I'm sure it's the same all over other parts of the city as well, but in the rural areas it's particularly pertinent. I had an opportunity to attend the mayoral hustings before the election and ironically also bumped into the then candidate, now mayor Oliver Copard. And eventually, conversation, very quickly, the conversation turned to buses. He promised me, rather bashfully, with all due respect, that if he was elected, he would make this his number one priority. I hope he can keep to that promise. I hope that he can be imaginative and he can look at new ways to provide a mass transit system that is fit for purpose. And I hope that Sheffield City Council would provide support for him to do this. I also hope that he won't hide behind the 'but there's no money' message. He has to be more imaginative than that. And while he's devising his grand strategy to get out of this mess, could he please have a look at some quick wins? It's in the motion, but I don't suppose many people in the public will have got to that. Improve the accuracy of the real-time display timings. I mean, I've been there, we've probably all been there, 10 minutes, nine minutes, eight minutes, four minutes, 10 minutes, nine minutes, or it just doesn't appear at all. Make sure that every bus stop has accurate displays of timetables because we all don't live in the digital world. And can we please link trams to buses terminals? For Stanington residents, the bus and tram service is a vital pathway into and out of the city centre. For many, it's the only option. It needs to be suitably priced and a regular reliable service. Cutting buses cannot be the solution. If we are to have any chance of hitting our 2030 carbon targets, we need a mass transit system that works. We cannot afford to waste another four years. I'm pleased to support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Williams and congratulations on your maiden speech. Well done. Can I now ask councillor Joe Otten to speak on the motion? Councillor Otten?
Thank you Lord Mayor and congratulations to councillors Crossland, Hunt and Williams for their excellent maiden speeches. I'll get to the point, I mean, there are three causes to the problem that we're facing with the buses at the moment. The first has been the delays in going to a franchising model, which has already been mentioned. The Act was passed in 2017 that made it much easier and more of a practical proposition to go to franchising. I see Labour have wheeled out the quote from Norman Baker again. That was a long time ago, he was wrong then because he agreed with what Labour and Sheffield were saying then, but he's certainly been proved wrong by events. We should have gone to franchising much sooner than we have. The second is funding. If you want a strategic, if it's a strategic policy to move, to make mobile shift happen, you need to fund an adequate bus network before you're going to get the virtual circle that councillor Hunt referred to. And if you don't do that, then you are in danger of the spiral of decline. And so the latest round of funding cuts from the government are, you know, part of that problem, but they're not in a vacuum, there's a context to them. And that context is that a lot of that funding was temporary to cover the Covid pandemic and the losses that buses would make during that time. And that passenger right ship has not recovered to pre-pandemic levels. People are choosing to stay at home and working from home and some of that change may be permanent. So I think, you know, there's a certain amount of agreements in this chamber, but there's a challenge going forward. Strategically, we've got to think about what if people are staying at home? How do we get a critical mass to support a bus network which in conjunction with the funding then would enable us to have a good network? And, you know, unless we solve that, unless we solve that problem, we might have to think about different ways of mobile shift and we might have to think about different transport solutions. Because we've been asking, we've been calling for mobile shift, we've been calling for bus priority for years and years and years and it's gone backwards. So, you know, is that going to be our plan B? What's our plan C? What are we going to do? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Otten. Can I call upon councillor Mazza Iqbal to speak to this motion? Thank you councillor Iqbal.
Thank you. Just a quick couple of points, I think, because the ex-mayor isn't around and neither is the current mayor. So just to be very clear, the ex-mayor, Dan Jarvis, led a bus review. He also submitted, sorry, on the bus review, which was then chaired by Clive Betts MP, and that process involved all the four local authorities and the current mayor has picked that up and he's started the franchise process, which as councillor Otten has pointed out, is going to take 12 to 18 months. Mayor Jarvis also put in a bid for the bus services improvement plan and the government decided to give us a big fat zero and he clearly said, and I remember Louise Hague, our shadow transport secretary, also saying this government has shafted us, pardon the language there. So to say that the previous mayor or the current mayor are not doing anything is completely untrue. They were the two points I'd like to make. Can I also extend the three councillors, councillor Crossley, Holland, Hunt and Williams for their fantastic maiden speeches? Thank you Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Iqbal. Can I call upon councillor Shafak Mohammed to speak to the motion? Thank you councillor Mohammed.
Thank you Lord Mayor. I often follow councillor Iqbal and I often criticise him, but on this occasion, I agree with him when he said that Mayor Jarvis is not here. The only thing I'd like to say, he wasn't here for four years. Where was he? Because the Sheffield Bus Partnership was launched in 2012, October, and very soon after, we started to see that the partnership wasn't really working and we started. So my question to all Labour colleagues in this chamber is, on that road to Damascus, when did you see the light that meant that you now support the cancellation of the Sheffield Bus Partnership? Because it clearly wasn't 2013, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, because it's only now, a few months back, that you soon discovered that partnership wasn't working. And in terms of Clive Betts, seriously, what has Clive Betts done? What has Clive Betts done that has improved the bus services in the south east? Forget the rest of the county. Because within days, end of this month, there are services that run through Clive Betts' own constituency and they are being cut. So what has Clive Betts done? I honestly, if I could get my money back from my taxes, I'd want a refund. So where are we now? Well, look at our two most nearest competitor city regions, Manchester, where we do have a mayor who is Labour, who has got the go to actually get on with a job, who didn't actually sit on his hands. And we similarly have Tracy Brabham, who I've met a few times. Great, she's also getting on with a job. And what we're saying is, don't defend who unfends. Well, you know, Dan Jarvis was absent from his job and as a result, the bus passengers of our region are paying the price because he's allowed those bus services to get away with it. And we are about to lose some services now and we'll lose a third of it in October. And this enhanced partnership is forced to increase bus services and all it's going to do is actually reducing themselves. Let's pull out of it.
Thank you councillor Mohammed. Can I call upon councillor Brian Lodge, who will be the last speaker at this motion this afternoon? Thank you. Councillor Lodge?
Thank you Chair. Congratulations on the maiden speeches today, they're all fantastic in there. Very passionate speech from councillor Mohammed there as he's talking through and he talks about Mayor Jarvis wasn't here. You need to be a bit careful because I seem to remember there was a Sheffield City councillor, sitting councillor, who was actually sitting in European Parliament at the same time, who was also absent. So just be careful when you start calling these things out here. And what's we done in things in looking at the bus partnership? Well, Norman Baker, who was a Lib Dem member of the coalition government, and you can groan councillor Otten, he was quite supportive of the bus partnership when he came up here and it was the only game in town at the time that we had to go through. And let's not kid ourselves, why are we in this position that we're having to cut tendered services? Because we've all cut the support that we've given to the SYPTA.
Because we've all cut the support that we've given to the S Y P T E. Because of the cuts forced on this government, starting from 2010, when the Lib Dems propped up a Tory government and forced cuts across South Yorkshire and across this city. And the subsidy that's gone to the P T E has been cut substantially since then, because we are facing massive cuts to our budget. So let's not rewrite history. Let's just remember what history was in there. And it's right that we should have an integrated transport system. We should have a system that's cheap and reliable. Recently, I was down on holiday. We'd been down the south of France, went down by public transport all the way down, using trains. And we were using public transport down there. And it's one and a half euros in the Neath area to get on a bus. And you can integrate, you can change between bus and tram. And you've got 72 minutes, and you can get on as many buses and many trams as you want. You're going to London, you tap on, you tap off, and the services are co-terminus in different places. You can meet up, you can travel easily. That's what we want across South Yorkshire. Cut out the rhetoric that's going on about Dan Jarvis not being here. We all know what he did do. We all know the partnership that was there that was set up. We know that it was going into the bus review. And we know that councillor Copard is taking it forward. And franchising is a good option that we will deliver. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Lodge. I'm now going to offer...
Mayor Copard, sorry. We've got an 80/50 council vote.
I'm now going to offer the right to reply to the motion, councillor Andrew Sanger. Councillor Sanger?
Thank you, Chair. I mean, I think we've had a very good debate. Big congratulations to great maiden speeches from councillor Crossland, councillor Hunt and councillor Williams. It's very clear across the chamber, the importance of bus services. It's really good in terms of finding a way forward in terms of franchising is now the preferred option, despite, as we've just heard from councillor Mohammed, the fact that we've had the opportunity to move to do that a number of times in the past. The service cuts we face in September, October are incredibly serious across the communities of Sheffield. And we do need to find a way of working together, working with Mayor Copard to make sure those cuts do not happen and make sure that we can deliver a bus service for all the communities across Sheffield in the years ahead. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks, councillor Sanger. We're now going to be moving to the vote on amendment number one, moved by councillor Tom Hunt, which will be conducted using the electronic voting system, unless we have unanimous support for the amendment. Thank you.
Lord Mayor, please, over here. Please, I vote in parts on this.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you. So in voting for, I'll be abstaining on K.
Okay, thank you. Any other? Okay. Okay, a vote will be conducted using the electronic voting system. May I remind members that the vote is on amendment number one, moved by councillor Tom Hunt. Can I ask that your vote be commenced now and request that members complete the two steps to the voting process within one minute?
Red. Against.
Thank you.
Okay. You press that person now. You press red.
Are there problems with the voting system?
Yeah.
So you have to log on with your cards in order to vote? Councillor Dale has just pointed out to me that there are instructions on your desk how to use the electronic voting system, if you want to go through those quickly. If you are having problems, raise your hand and the officers will come and support your logging on. Or the whips of your party will do that for you as well.
Thanks, Anne. And the last bit, this one concluded the vote. And it depends whether you want to vote as well. Do you want to vote?
I don't mind, actually.
But if you want to do it, so you can actually go up on the screen now. And then it gives you the voting options as to what you want to do. So this is on Tom Hunt's.
So I'm for, yeah. Has that done it? Who knows?
Are we still running it? Or have we finished it? Are we still running the vote, guys?
I should just add me.
Are we still running the vote? So if you can read out the results as well from the screen. So we've got 43 for, 25 against, no abstentions.
Thanks, colleagues. I'm sure we will improve on this for our next council meeting. Like, as I said earlier, there is instructions on how to use the voting system on your desk. So please refer to those. So the voting has completed. And there are... 43 members for, 25 members against, and no abstentions. This motion is carried. Thank you, colleagues. So I'm now going to move to amendment two, moved by councillor Douglas Johnson, which will also be conducted using the electronic voting system. Unless we've got unanimous support for the amendment.
Dissent.
Okay, let's move to the voting system.
Lord Mayor, voting in parts, please. In voting for this amendment, we are voting against J and K and abstaining on O.
Thank you, councillor Hurst. How many have we got here at the moment? Until that's all, thank you. J, K and O. So is that concluded now?
Have we concluded there? Did you want to vote on that one?
No. Thank you, colleagues. That vote's concluded now. I'll read the results. So that is 39 members voted for, 26 members voted against, with no abstentions. I do need to conclude that because there was voting in parts, the vote was carried in parts but lost on item J, K and O. Thank you, members. Now we move to the vote on the substantive motion.
Lord Mayor, dissent in parts, if I may. In voting for, we'll be against the clauses from the Labour amendment and those in the Green amendment, apart from the green N, which we will support.
Thank you, councillor Otten.
Lord Mayor?
Councillor Chinchan?
Thank you, councillor Hurst. In voting for, I'll be abstaining on K of the Labour amendment, against L of the Green amendment, and abstaining on N of the Green amendment.
Thank you, councillor Chinchan.
Lord Mayor, voting in parts. In voting for, we are voting against C1, 2 and 3, and H1 part A. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hurst.
Lord Mayor, voting in parts as well. So in voting for, we're voting against H.
Thank you, councillor Betts. Okay, colleagues, do you want to make your votes? I nearly said clashing it.
I'm going to do the motion, and then I'm going to leave because it's my daughter's presentation at lunch, then.
All right. So do you want it? If I do advance it?
The right to reply, and ask our daughter to do it. Is that okay?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so is this straight on?
No, I've got no idea. I'm just going to see if it's announced.
Quite bingo. So...
I think it's carried in part. So again, we're voting in down.
Yeah. So 65 for?
Labor...
Is that right? 66 for? Yes. 67, that's all we've got. So it's carried, isn't it?
Well, it's carried because of all the voting parts. Greens have most of the votes for, it seems to be no overlap. But there is no overlap in the greens of all meetings of H. The Labour vote against H1. But I don't know if it's...
So it hasn't been...
So I think H1 I is most carried.
Okay. And then we go into which then...
On the next one. So this will conclude this item.
Right. Okay, colleagues, we've got all the votes in now. And the motion has been carried by 66 votes. But because there was votes in parts, we think that HI A is lost. So thank you, colleagues. Okay, thanks, colleagues. Item number seven. Notice of motion regarding secure connection respected neighbourhoods. Can I call... There is a maximum time limit, again, of 25 minutes for this item. May I call upon councillor Mazza Iqbal to move the motion? You may speak for up to three minutes. Councillor Iqbal?
Thank you, Chair. The government promised a bus revolution with its national bus strategy. But despite this rhetoric, one year on, it's clear the bus industry in England and here in Sheffield is more in crisis than ever. With services facing devastating cuts of almost a third and recruitment and retention problems caused by years of bus operators refusing to pay decent wages, this crisis cannot be allowed to continue. Local buses are a lifeline for many. Many of us rely on these daily services for getting to work, seeing our family, caring for others, for leisure and for shopping. As a city, we are spending millions and millions to improve public transport infrastructure to make journeys by public transport, walking and cycling more efficient. But we cannot make significant improvements without a proper bus service in place that serves everyone in our local communities. In respect of both the climate emergency and the cost of living crisis, the extent of these brutal cuts is deeply concerning. They will lead to more household struggling, more loneliness and exclusion. And every cut makes the bus network less viable. A future of more car dependence, more traffic, more emissions. The impact on society is huge. Our mayor, Oliver Copard, has started the process of franchising. The government now needs to slam on the brakes on these cuts and deliver on its promises. The government needs to start putting the needs of our communities first. They talk about levelling up, but at the moment, they are levelling us down. More funding is needed so we can invest in more frequent bus services, cheaper fares and faster journeys. And operators need to ensure drivers receive a professional wage. Ultimately, our bus industry would be better served by being in public ownership, where passenger are pork before profit. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Iqbal. Can I ask councillor Abdul Kayem to second the motion? Councillor Kayem?
Thank you, Chair. Can I first of all offer my congratulations to all three councillor colleagues on their maiden speech? Chair, it's not surprising that people feel so angry that the already strained bus network in Sheffield will soon be further slashed due to the cuts in government funding. Sheffield people deserve better public transport system. And yet again, the Tory government has failed to deliver on their promise, leaving South Yorkshire with no funding to help improve our public transport. For the next, I think from next week, the 32 and 32A, which serves the area that I predominantly work in, will be slashed. This is dreadful news for our local community there. The buses are a lifeline to so many and have a huge role in underpinning connectivity across the city. Our area economy and job opportunities will be drastically impacted. And we know that a lack of opportunities also leads to increases in crime. Talking about crime, Chair, our communities also deserve better when it comes to community safety. Again, the government has failed to get to grips with major issues that are having a devastating effect on our neighbourhoods. The cost of living crisis, crime, connectivity, lack of opportunities, to mention but a few. Violent crime and serious incidents in the city are on the rise. And whilst the government does nothing, we as a council must continue to prioritise community safety and do all we can to address these issues. Chair, in spite of the ever-tightening budget situation, the council continues to invest more in community safety measures year on year. We have more CCTV, community wardens, we have more outreach work, more information sharing. And we're enhancing and improving the work of our local aid committees to respond quickly to local issues. And in order to help our partners respond effectively to serious incidents, we need to develop a citywide incident protocol, one that brings together all our key partners, the police, the Police and Crime Commission Office, our social services, our voluntary and community sector, our council staff and councillors. We need an effective communication system to ensure that correct information is shared quickly and acted upon to better serve our neighbourhoods and our communities. I'll therefore second this motion. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Kayem. There are two proposed amendments to the motion. I therefore ask for councillor Mike Leary to move amendment number three. You have up to two minutes to speak. Councillor Leary?
Thank you, Chair, and congratulations to councillors Crossland, Williams and Hunt on their excellent maiden speeches. There are two key elements to the challenges facing bus services. The first is the government withdrawing in full for Covid funding, triggering a one-third reduction in services this October. No organisation can operate with a cliffhedge reduction rather than a phased reduction, which if it has to happen, is the obvious option. Secondly, the South Yorkshire mayor knew this was coming. What preparations and discussions were held with both bus operators to prevent this level of service reduction? Clearly, if you look at the South Yorkshire Enhanced Partnership Plan on Bus Services and look at West Yorkshire, you may well find the answer. West Yorkshire have laid out detailed key performance indicators in their fifty-page plan over five years to improve best services. South Yorkshire, in their seventy-six-page plan, have done nothing. Is it any wonder that West Yorkshire gained seventy-five million in the funding pot and South Yorkshire nothing? The South Yorkshire mayor has had four years to progress improvement in bus services and go down the franchise route we have long recommended. And are we to Dan Jarvis's party shop to the government? We've been shafted. No, Dan. The bus users in South Yorkshire have been shafted and let's see if the new South Yorkshire mayor can make a better fist of it. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Leavery. I'm now going to ask councillor Baker to second the amendment number three. Councillor Baker?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And congratulations to Crossland, Williams and Hunt. Sounds like a legal firm, doesn't it? Really good. People of Sheffield suffered from increasing fares and an increase in the buses and the times in which the buses operate. They no longer have faith in the buses, so they're simply finding alternative ways to travel in their droves. It's going to take an awful lot to get them back and we need to. We really need to, particularly if we are serious about achieving our climate change targets. I've had numerous conversations with bus operators trying to get the simplest things to improve the situation for the people of Sheffield and My Wood, like buses that actually arrive when they should and they complete their routes and they don't turn around before they get to the end of the route, like a lot of us that live on the outskirts have found. I would have thought that was quite simple. You know, turn up when you're supposed to be there, go where you're supposed to be and do the whole lot of it. It seems not, not simple at all. No joy. The previous mayor, Dan Jarvis, did one thing right. He asked Clydesdale's MP to do a bus review and he did a really good one. He said what we all wanted to hear. That's it. It stopped. We've heard no more about it whatsoever. It's just a really good review, but nothing's happened about it. The new mayor is making the right noises, but the bus companies are still not providing their published bus services. This affects the residents of My Wood and others on the outskirts of the city really badly. With no access to reliable public transport, the only option is to take the car. Where does that leave the young people who need to get to further education, entertainment and work? A failed transport network impacts on our young and old particularly badly. So come on, South Yorkshire mayor, Oliver. Please get this job done.
Thank you, councillor Baker. And I move swiftly on to amendment number four and ask councillor Douglas Johnson for the speak for up to two minutes.
Because I see councillor Gilligan speak first.
Councillor Gilligan. Councillor Gilligan?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to say well done to councillors Crossland, Hunt and Williams for their maiden speech. I think we've all been talking for the last hour about how bad the bus service is in Sheffield. But we also know from looking at our councillor postbags that there are too many cars on Sheffield's roads. This causes congestion, delays, parking problems, air pollution, climate change, evidence of which we are living through at the moment. As a city, we need a citywide strategy that enables people to get around in ways that doesn't always rely on the private car. It will make the city a much nicer place for us all to live and work if we can reduce car journeys and it will contribute to reducing our carbon footprint, which will be serious for future generations, for our children and our children's children if we don't address it. We recognise that the bus service has not returned to pre-Covid levels, so we do have to support the existing buses that are running and make sure they continue to run. Our amendment suggests some things we can do towards promoting these buses. But as well as asking, demanding and calling out for better buses, we need to look at other ways to get around the city. And I'm going to quote Greg Fell here because he can say it better than I can. He says, Greg Fell, our director of public health, I should say, he says, "We don't walk enough, we don't cycle enough and we drive too much, especially for short journeys." "A third of all car journeys in the city are less than 500 metres. This is bad for us and it's bad for the planet. We need to think about transport choices. We need to understand how we can make different choices." This significant shift won't happen by simple nudges. We do need to invest in alternative ways of travelling. So we do need to get Sheffielders out of their cars and on their bikes. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gilligan. I'm going to ask councillor Douglas Johnson to second the amendment and then we won't be debating on this motion. We will be moving straight to formal on the voting system. Thank you, councillor Johnson.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'll try and be brief. Congratulations first of all to councillor Williams, who's the oldest-looking maiden in the chamber, I think, today. Can I say, I'm too late, so sorry. Back to this serious issue, we are debating a serious issue today. Councillor Little said earlier on, there's been hand-wringing for too long. We all know we need to get more money out of government. We've put the figures in there about how much more London gets than Yorkshire for transport spending in government. It's obviously a disgrace. I've written to the new mayor, Mayor Copard, to offer the support from the Green Group for any moves he can take to get money out of government. But within this council this afternoon, we have, as a council, this council has voted against even considering some of the measures that are within our control about what we could do about the bus services in this city. And I think that is the approach we've taken. I think we have voted for more hand-wringing probably for many years into the future as our bus service continues to dwindle. Sheffield's the only major city in the country to have lost out on this BICF funding, which will come in from October. That's why we have cuts in services in October. That was based on the Bus Sots Improvement Plan. The government said it was ambitious and it was ambitious. It was poor, it was a poor quality piece of work. Bus campaigners who want to be involved in it were not allowed that. It was put in under the previous mayor's watch. But it was poor, it was unambitious and that's why I refused to vote for it when it came up there. The point is, we need to grapple with things. We know we haven't got enough money from central government. Funny enough, that's something that hasn't changed for many years. There are things that we can do, otherwise we wouldn't be sitting here. So I'm just asking for, next time this comes around, let's not wring our hands anymore. Let's actually do something next time, given that we've chosen not to do anything today.
Thank you, councillor Johnson. I'm now going to be moving to the vote on the amendment number three, moved by councillor Mike Leavery, which will be conducted using the electronic voting system unless we have unanimous support for the amendment.
Lord Mayor?
Colleagues, I think we're just going to move straight to the vote.
Lord Mayor, can I vote in parts, please? In voting for, I'll be against J and abstaining on D.
Thank you, councillor Chin Chen. Okay, colleagues, I've now got the results of the vote. So it is members have voted twenty-seven, sorry, twenty-eight for, thirty-six against and one abstention. That motion is lost, that amendment, sorry, is lost. Amendment number four, we're going to go straight to the electronic voting system. Thanks, colleagues.
Voting in parts, please, Lord Mayor. In voting for, we are voting against L and M and abstaining on Q.
Colleagues, some members haven't voted. Can I ask if you haven't, can you vote now, please? Only got sixty-three, shall we? Shall I go for it? Okay, colleagues, it looks like everybody's voted now who's here and the result of that vote is thirty-nine members are for the amendment and twenty-six are against. That means that amendment is carried. But others are carried in parts. So it's carried except for paragraphs L, M and O. Thanks, colleagues. Okay, colleagues, can we now move to the substantive vote? And can we use our electronic voting system? Thank you.
Lord Mayor, in voting for, we are against the D and E from the Labour Amendment and against the whole of the Green Amendment apart from P.
Lord Mayor?
Thank you, councillor Orton. Councillor Chin Chen?
In voting against, I'll be for J and K of the original motion, abstaining on E of the original motion and for M, O and abstaining on P of the Green Amendment.
Thank you, councillor.
I'll send you.
We're still missing a few colleagues having voted. Oh, it's climbing up. So there's one member who's registered but not voted.
I don't think I'll swing to this one.
Shall we just go for it? Yeah, okay. Okay, colleagues, yeah, we've got sixty-six members who've voted and on the substantive motion, we've got sixty-four members voting for the motion. That motion is carried. Thank you. Thanks, colleagues. So we're now on item number eight, notion of motives regarding pride in Sheffield. Obviously, we're just going to be voting formally, so I will be reading out the names of the councillors to formally vote for the motion and second it. Thank you. May I call upon councillor Sophie Thornton to move the motion? Councillor Thornton?
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Thornton. Can I call upon councillor Simon Clement Jones to second the motion?
Thank you, I'm out and proud to second this motion, thank you.
There are two proposed amendments and these are numbers five and six on the list of amendments circulated at the meeting. May I call upon councillor Ben Miskel to move amendment number five? Councillor Miskel?
Formerly, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Miskel. May I call upon councillor Dunn to second the amendment?
Formerly, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Dunn. May I now call upon councillor Angela Argentio to move amendment number six? Councillor Argentio? Thank you, councillor Argentio. May I now call upon councillor Martin Fitz to second the amendment?
Formerly seconded, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Fitz. I'm now going to move to the vote on amendment number five, moved by councillor Ben Miskel, which will be conducted using the electronic voting system unless we have unanimous support for the amendment.
Dissent, Lord Mayor. In vote, please go in parts. In voting for, I'll be against O1 and O2. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Chin Chen. Thank you, colleagues. That amendment was carried. Oh, has everybody voted? We've still got two colleagues registered but not voted. No, we've excluded. No, we've excluded, yeah. So, yeah, we've now got a full house and that amendment is carried. So colleagues, we're now moving to vote on amendment number six. Again, please use your electronic system. So we're in the vote now, so we're kind of round, round here. Yeah, we expect to see. If you want to vote, this is where we're standing on this one. Still two colleagues missing off the voting system. Marvelous, that's another full house. Okay colleagues, members have voted 10 for, 26 against and 30 abstentions. This amendment is lost. We're now moving on to the substantive motion. And again, we're going to ask you to vote by electronic system. Thank you.
Lord Mayor, please do not vote in part. So in voting for this motion, I'll be against K3 of the original motion and voting as I did with the Labour amendment. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Chin Chen. I can see Jackie moving to the back of the room, so I don't think she's voting.
Ah, she's not going to vote, so she's going to be.
Shall I? Of course you can.
So looking at 65, it's around about a figure.
Lord Mayor, in this voting, we will be voting as, as we did on the, in voting for, we're abstaining on the motion that we did earlier. I think everybody's voted now, I understand. I think Jackie's gone, I think, yeah. Thanks colleagues, everybody's voted now and the results are 65 for, nobody against and no abstentions. That motion is carried. So we're now going to go to item number nine. Can I call upon councillor Lewis Chin Chen to move the motion?
Formally moved, Lord Mayor. Formally moved, thank you.
And I, as the Chair of the meeting, have been asked by councillor Chin Chen to second. So I second the motion. We will move straight on to the amendments. I call upon councillor Brian Lodge. Oh, sorry, I call upon councillor Julie Grocott to move the amendment number seven. Councillor Grocott?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, formally moved.
Can I now call upon councillor Lodge to second amendment number seven?
Formally moved, Chair.
Thank you councillor Lodge. May I call upon councillor Tim Huggan to move amendment number eight? Councillor Huggan?
Formally moved, Lord Chair.
Thank you councillor Huggan. Can I call upon councillor Orton to second the amendment?
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Can I call upon Ruth Mercio to move amendment number nine? Councillor Mercio?
Formally moved.
Thank you councillor Mercio. Can I now call upon councillor Paul Turpin to second amendment number nine?
Formally seconded.
Okay, we're not having a vote, so. Can I ask colleagues to move to the vote on amendment number seven, again through your electronic system?
Lord Mayor, again dissent in parts, in voting for would be against L. I'm not sure what the protocol is, if dissent is only applied to parts of the motion, whether we still need to go to the electronic vote, but maybe, maybe, maybe think, okay, okay, all right.
Of course we're even.
So we're on amendment seven.
Yeah.
So we're now going to be, we're now on this bit a bit, so we'll be reading out.
In there, in there, yeah, okay. And how many people do we think we've got now?
We've got 65.
Nobody else, did yourself?
And they go grey, that indicates you protested, you voted, you see one, you do.
Yeah.
So this one is going to get carried in part because the Lib Dem is voted against paragraph L. And Greens are going against the amendment, so that one, she was lost. The paragraph L is lost, the rest of it is carried.
So we're still waiting for people's vote, are we? 50, 60, 20. We're still waiting for one or two colleagues to vote, please. Every time you say it, somebody votes. Keep saying it. We think there are 65 members altogether in the chamber. Yay, we're there. Great, thanks colleagues. So I'll read out the vote. So on that amendment, we have 54 for the amendment, 11 against, no abstentions. This is carried but lost in parts on paragraph L. Thank you colleagues. We'll now move to the vote on amendment number eight. Again, we'll be using the electronic system.
Lord Mayor, in vote, if I could vote in parts, in voting for, I'll be against three, third paragraph, thank you.
Is that me doing it? That's it.
Must be a lot.
Right, we've got a full house, so I will read out the results. So for amendment number eight, 36 people for, voted for, 29 members voted against and no abstentions. That amendment was carried. Thank you colleagues. Now we're going to vote on amendment nine, same system, please.
Lord Mayor, voting in parts, please. In voting for, we are voting against H1.
Thanks councillor Hurst.
Oh, sorry, N1. I can't read my own writing, it's late.
Yeah, in, in, in voting against, we are for N and N.
Okay colleagues, everybody's voted now. So members have voted 38 for the amendment and 26 against. So that is carried. We now move to the substantive motion to vote using our electronic system. Thank you.
Lord Mayor, in parts again, as per the amendment, we'll be voting against the NI of the amendment number nine.
Thank you councillor Hurst.
Chair, in, in voting for, we'll be voting against clauses J, K and L from the Green amendment.
For.
The vice board, yeah.
Lord Mayor, in, in voting for, I'll be against J through to L of the Labour amendment, as I did with the, voting as I did with the Lib Dem amendment, and against J through to N2, N4 and N5 of the Green amendment.
Thank you councillor Chin Chen.
Eight was carried.
All our brains are. Councillor Fitz, if you say that everybody's done it, it might go. I'm going to say not all colleagues have voted. Well done councillor Fitz. Councillor Orton, do you mind just reminding us how you are voting in parts on this motion, please?
On, on the substantive, yes, we're voting for substantive, but against the clauses in the Green amendment that we voted against the first time round. I've, I've said it the other way round, because we're voting for. And so each time, we voted against the first three clauses of the Green amendment and for the last two. But at amendment stage, we were voting against but for two. But this time, we're voting for but against the three because we're voting for most of the clauses. Does that make sense? Yeah, I, I, yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I'm not, my calculations concur with councillor Turpin's, I think the whole thing has been carried now. Apart from the clause L of the Labour amendment, I think everything, everything has been
And that's it. So on the substantive motion, there are 64 colleagues for the motion, no colleagues against and no abstentions. So me and my fabulous assistant officer here think that that's carried. Okay, so let's move colleagues to item number 10, updated to the council constitution. There is a maximum time, no, there isn't. This item and business is to approve the recommendations in the report of the Director of Legal and Governance, published with the agenda for this meeting, seeking approval for, one, a change to the made-to-the-time limit for the meetings of the policy committees as recommended by the Governance Committee, and, two, several minor consequential changes to, to be made to the council's constitution. The recommendations are to, one, approve the changes to the various parts of the constitution as outlined in section 3.1 and 3.2 of the report and as set out in appendices K to H and II. Note the minor and the consequential changes to part 3.3 of the constitution that had been made by the Director of Legal and Governance as outlined in the section 3.3 of the report and as set out in appendices I and J. The motion to approve the recommendations is to report that it is to be moved by councillor Julie Grocott and seconded by councillor Sue Alston. Councillor Grocott?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, beautifully explained. I move the motion, thank you.
Councillor Alston?
Thank you Chair, formally seconded.
Thank you councillor Alston. Lord Mayor, councillor Grocott? And now going to move to the vote on the motion, is, is the motion agreed? Item number 11, minutes of the previous council meeting. Are they agreed? Fabulous, right, okay. Do I need to add something? Okay. Item number 12, membership of council bodies and representatives to serve on other bodies. to serve on other bodies. So it's moved that councillor Diane Hurst, seconded by councillor Joe Orton, that approval be given to the changes of the membership of committees and of other council bodies and the appointment of representatives to serve on external bodies and related issues on the details of the schedule circulated at the meeting. Councillor Hurst?
Formally moved, Chair.
Councillor Orton?
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
We're now going to move to the vote on the motion. Is that agreed, colleagues? Thank you, colleagues. The motion is carried. I think that's the conclusion of this very hot and sticky council meeting. Thanks for your patience, everybody. Go home and get gold.